Good evening. The November 15th, 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Anarondle County Council is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. As a reminder, masks must be worn in all county buildings. Please pause for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask Pastor Maurice Cornwell to come forward if he can. He is the pastor of Uplift Through the Word Ministries in Pasadena, Maryland. He's one of my constituents, and I'm grateful that he's here this evening to lead us in the invocation. Pastor, we probably ought to get you a microphone.
Father God, right now, in the magnificent name of Jesus, we come before you asking you to allow your Holy Spirit to fall upon this council. As decisions are made that will impact in our community, Father God, we ask you to let your Holy Spirit guide them. That decisions will be made, Father God, not based upon personalities, not based upon what folks have done, not based upon fellowships that they've had, but only based upon you. We ask you, Father God, that we know that there's people who believe that the separation of church and state was meant to protect the state from the church, but, Lord, we know it was meant to protect the church from the state. That you will allow your Holy Spirit to fall and guide the decisions that are being made, Father God, maybe for the first time in 80 years in some cases, Father God, that your people will hear and that the decisions that are made, Father God, will be impacted by you. We ask you, Father God, that there's been many names that have been called in this hallowed hall. Many diverse names have been called. Many prayers have been done. But I stand tonight in the magnificent name of Jesus Christ, asking for your Holy Spirit to have its way again and guide the decisions, Father God, of the people that we have elected into position. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now, if we can do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, there was one submission of the invitation to audience portion through the online testimony tool that was shared with the entire council, has been added to the record, and a summary is posted on the website.
We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have a sign-up sheet, two people on it, William Love and Kurt Svenson. Please come down to the table. And if anyone else would like to speak at the invitation to audience, I have a few more William Love? Is there a William Love in here? No? Mr. Svenson?
Kurt Svenson, 934 Juliet Court, Arnold, Maryland. My comments do relate to the school bus driver shortage. Is that okay for me to speak to that topic?
You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Despite the reality of a nationwide school bus driver shortage, the county's longstanding inefficiency in school bus transportation actually holds the key to solving our bus driver shortage. The school system's own January 8, 2020 consultant report reveals this fact, concluding that it quote-unquote "conservatively estimates" at least 5% of existing runs could be consolidated, saving $2.48 million annually. Based on the consultant's update provided at the board's October 20 meeting, it looks like the route optimization work is now expected to provide for the reduction of 67 buses from 585 to 518. The board has wisely delayed start time changes to next fall, but they can implement the majority of bus route consolidations now. The consultant added, "I'd also suggest to you that if you do elect to do an opt-in, that should reduce your need for busing, and that may help with your crisis." As the county's final fiscal authority and the provider of the majority of funding to the school board, you have the authority, indeed the responsibility, to hold the school board accountable. Bill 8821 is unnecessary. I'm pleased to see that this bill is being withdrawn, but that doesn't mean the wasteful expenditure of taxpayer funds will not happen. Apparently, when you can't get the votes to pass a bill, you just fold up your tents and use the king's purse that is not subject to legislative review and approval, but that's a subject of another bill later tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Svenson.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dole?
This thing's too short. There we go. David Dole, 534 Heavy Tree Hills, Sovereign Park, Maryland, 21146, Chairman of the Anarondle County Libertarians. First of all, sir, excellent speech. Thank you. So I would just like to return to the comments that I made two weeks ago. According to the CDC, masks that are not N95 rated do not prevent the spread of COVID. Yes, it prevents the spread of COVID through water droplets, but we all know, because we would have drowned by now, that not everything in your lungs is water. So if you want to protect people from getting COVID, if you want to protect the spread, we got to start implementing either an N95 mask or acknowledge the fact that the masks aren't needed at all. So once again, I'm looking at the seven of you, and most of you are not wearing N95 masks, and that's against the science, and I just don't understand what kind of limit we're in here. And I would love to entertain any questions you might have for the panel.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Next, sir?
My name is Joe Larson. Live at 7771 Kidwell Drive, Hanover. I am the first vice president of the Anarondle County Volunteer Firefighters Association, and I'd like to speak about an incident that happened involving our Alarmers. Our Alarmers is a group of fire service volunteers who are serving a support role, who actively respond to fire grounds to assist in the health and safety of firefighters after they come out of the life, we call it IDLH, eminent danger to life and health environment, basically that's inside a burning building. They were recently featured as an integral part of the health and safety, in a safety stand-down back in June for a fire department, mandatory fire department training. To get to the short part of the story, on August 6th, they were involved in a motor vehicle collision injuring two people, two of these responders. While they were not actively on a call at the time, they were en route doing administrative functions and were attempting to assist a disabled motorist on the highway when they were involved in the motor vehicle collision. Like I said, the two passengers were injured, and the vehicle was totaled. The risk management of Anarondle County refused their payment for their medical bills, for their workman's comp for the time off while they were recovering, and they are refusing to reimburse for replacement of this vehicle. Briefly, the Alarmers were no longer responding to fire grounds as dispatched because they took their vehicles out of service, because they weren't sure if they were going to be covered if they got into another accident. The reason for the denial from risk management was stated that they were not firefighters. I'd like to ask the county council, to work with the county council, to update the code involving these responders. While they're not firefighters, they are an integral part of our health and safety on the fire ground. So I look forward to working with the county council to help update this code and these rules. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pruski.
Councilman Andrew Pruski. Mr. Larson, thank you. I do have a question.
Yes.
I have, as you know, several volunteer groups in my area that I represent, and of course, it's throughout the county. Does the Alarmers have a MOU with the fire department similar to, let's say, Herald Harbor, Arundel, other things? I know there's typically a MOU that's signed to provide clarity on situations like this. And again, I just wanted to ask for...
Right. They have a memorandum of understanding for them to operate, but they do not have a similar, what's known as reciprocity agreement with the county. So in that, to answer that question, no, they do not have that reciprocity that is similar to other fire departments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Ms. Johnson?
Julia Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I would like to throw in my two cents worth about the Alarmers. Again, you guys know I'm old, and I go back in ancient history. These people have done a great deal for the firemen and in other emergency situations. So I do encourage you to try to find a way to help these folks, because they are really important. Returning to my longstanding issue this year about presenting these documents to you, to ask you to see if you see the errors and see whether there's a legislative way to find some relief so other people don't go through the same insane ordeal that I've been going through. I told you about the case. It was a zoning violation that the county inspector accused me of. So we wind up, and the notice was sent, the trial was sent to the wrong address, therefore I never got it, therefore I never went, therefore I was found guilty, by default, and that means because I did not appear, except that the judge forgot to check the records where it would show that I had not received the notice. And then there was another matter that the attorney representing the county had said, "And we demand judgment on affidavit." Except then, there was no affidavit from the inspector, which was the sole witness, and therefore, there was no evidence, not one word of evidence to support a judgment of guilty. Additionally, when the defendant does not file a plea, the duty of the clerk is to file a plea of not guilty. But magically, on March 6th, 2018, somebody entered a plea of guilty. And so with all of these things combining, the judge didn't read the affidavit. Oops, oh, doggone. Well, you'll see me again.
Till next time, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. This panel is dismissed. And is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on any subject not included in the printed agenda? Last call. Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm Dave Morseburger, Davidsonville, Maryland. I got two things. First, I would like to state my interest in looking at proposed councilmatic districts for the upcoming 10 years. And second, Delegate Pruski, I'd like to publicly congratulate you for the Greater Crofton Council Citizens of the Year Award. That's a very, very good award, and congratulations. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Morseburger. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? On behalf of the administration, I'm going to withdraw Bill Number 8821, Madam Secretary. Anyone else? All right. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
And a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of November 1st, 2021.
The meeting was called to order by Chair Lacy at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers, Arundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 1st, 2021?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
Is there a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of November 1st, 2021 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 121, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Reemployment, Reduction of Benefits. Bill Number 121, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of Private Disposition of County-Owned Property Located in Millersville, Maryland. Bill Number 1221, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Requirements for Conditional Uses, Adult Independent Dwelling Units, Setbacks. Bill Number 1321, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Commercial Districts, Gunsmiths and Ammunition Sales Facilities. Bill Number 10421, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, School Bus Facilities.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 5921, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anarondle County Ethics Commission.
We will vote on Resolution Number 5921 at the end of the meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8521 as amended.
Bill Number 8521, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Public Schools.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, when you're ready, and your panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the county council. Pete Barron for the administration. Joining me at the table is Ms. Miller from OPZ, and our attorney for the evening, Ms. Kelly Kenny. 8521 was previously heard at the 11-1 council meeting. I want to thank everybody who's been involved in the discussion of this bill. As a reminder, the purpose of 8521 is to reinstate the provisions under Bill 9217 and 1518 that sunsetted with the adoption of the General Development Plan. We amended it at the last meeting because a couple of provisions were left out. I do want to flag that as we continue to review the bill, we had left off another phrase, so you have another amendment before you this evening. We understand, and I discussed this at the last meeting, our school APF law needs a lot of work, and we have a school APF work group. We discussed it at the last meeting. The goal of this bill is to maintain the status quo until that work group has done its job. So with that, we'll ask you to move the amendment at the appropriate time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council this time? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 8521 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any submissions.
All right. We will now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We do not have anybody signed up in advance, but if anyone who is here wishes to speak on the bill, now's the time to come forward. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 8521 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8521 as amended.
Bill Number 8521, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate Public Facilities, Public Schools.
Okay, well, we do have that one amendment from the administration, so Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment adds in a requirement for passing school APF that was part of Bill 1518.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I noted in my opening remarks, this phrase was part of what we intended to do upon introduction and was unintentionally left out, so we would hope the council would oblige us and put it in. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Allison Pickard, so moved.
And a second?
Radveen, second.
And is there any discussion? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just, I went and looked in the current code, and I don't see this sentence in the current code. Did I just miss it? Because if we're trying to maintain the status quo, I looked in 175501, and I'm just, I don't see that sentence specifically there now. Am I just missing it?
I'm going to ask Ms. Kenny, because I think it was Office of Law that's, or actually, I think it was council staff that spotted this omission.
Okay.
But Office of Law should be able to explain.
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I think that's because the current code has now been updated, so the sunset has been enacted, so everything that was enacted with Bill 1518 and 90, whatever the number was, 9217, has gone away. So that's why the current version doesn't have everything. This is putting everything back that was in those bills.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 5 is adopted.
Bill Number 8521, as amended, and amended again, will be heard on December 6th, 2021. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8921.
Bill Number 8921, An Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations.
Mr. Barron, when you're ready?
Help if I open to the correct page. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from Health is Ms. Penley from Budget, Mr. Teroux, and we have Ms. Kenny from Law. 8921 is an appropriation bill making supplementary appropriations from the unanticipated grant fund and general fund revenue. The bulk of the appropriations are directed at the Department of Health and support their important work combating COVID and substance abuse, including immunization and vaccines for children, opioid and substance abuse response. Mr. Teroux and Ms. Penley are here to answer any questions. There's also a $200,000 for OPZ for their impact fee study. The blue letter does an excellent job describing all pieces. Please move the bill.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Barron, in looking at the green letter from the Budget Office on this bill, it looks like about 4.8 million of the 5.4 million is going toward vaccines for kids, and then it says CDC Crisis Cooperative Agreement. Can you expand a little bit on what you'll be spending that 4.8 million on?
I'm going to ask Ms. Penley maybe to take that first.
Okay.
Good evening. Billy Penley from the Health Department. The first one, the immunization and vaccines for children grant, the $3.1 million. That is part of our COVID program. We will be spending that on testing and vaccinations. It funds approximately 140 staff members. For the disease, CDC Cooperative, the $1.7 million grant, this is a two-year grant that we received, and it's to expand and improve our existing workforce. It gives us funds to do gap analysis, staff analysis, hiring, training out there, so we're going to be using it for health equity training, emergency preparedness training, incident management training, and using it for special projects out there. We plan to hire some additional epidemiologists to further do disease prevention and investigations out there, and some health assistants for five of our high school health rooms.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Penley, thank you for that. So with the 140 staff that you indicated, are those staff that already exist in the Health Department, or are these going to be contractual staff folks that you bring in to do work on the vaccines for children?
There are already existing staff out there, and they're primarily county contractual staff members.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So in the auditor's report, there's some language that I'm just hoping you can expand on, Ms. Penley. The vaccination implementation activities, and then I would assume that that is strictly vaccinating children and not anything beyond, or does that include testing? And then the other area that I noticed was supporting COVID-19 prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery initiatives, including school-based health programs. What are those health-based programs?
It's going to be in the health rooms with the health assistants out there. We're going to be doing studies for employee satisfaction and to be able to hire. We're having a great deal of trouble hiring the medical staff, in particular, registered nurses for our school health rooms. So it's looking out at our competition and seeing how we can improve and to better support our staff, to attract staff to stay with us. The first question, that jumped to the second question. The first question, I believe, was related to the first one. Could you repeat that for me?
Sure. I was wondering what the details are of vaccination implementation activities. Is that strictly vaccination for children, or does it go beyond that to testing or surveillance programs?
The grant permits us to go beyond just the vaccination of children, but we are using it for vaccinating the children, starting with the rollout the past two weeks in the evenings and weekends, doing the vaccines for the five-to-11-year-olds, and continuing with that program, the booster program, and getting out to the underserved, vaccine-hesitant areas of the county to get them vaccinated.
Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up? One, yes, thank you. And does that include surveillance-type programs that would involve a third party?
No. No third parties involved.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Ms. Penley, with the 140 staff that you said that this is going to pay for, how are we paying them currently outside of the grant?
We're paying them from a grant that's already been appropriated for. This grant funding was rolled out after the budget was struck. So when the budget was struck, we have an allocation of $5 million in ARPA funding. This grant came to us, so we're using up all the grant funding that's coming in, and you know, so eventually, we don't, if we do, we'll tap into the ARPA, but we're using up all our grant funding. So it's being paid for an existing grant that there's available funding at the beginning of the year that grants $4.3 million.
Okay.
Do you have another question, Mr. Volkey?
I do. But Ms. Hare can go if she's...
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Penley, I just wanted to follow up. Councilwoman Fiedler asked about the surveillance testing with a third party, and you said no, but then you said not with a third party. Is any of this money going to be doing surveillance-type testing straight through the county in any of the schools?
So the schools are doing their own testing out there. So when you say surveillance, do you mean like contact tracing?
No, I mean...
Or disease prevention and studying the diseases?
I mean, testing of students otherwise asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic to try and isolate and quarantine folks, which is my understanding of what the surveillance testing is.
So we're not doing that with the school piece? We're doing testing on our own, but we're providing contact tracing?
Okay, but so none of this money goes towards testing kids in schools?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Again, so Ms. Penley, prior to March of 2020, did the county employ any of the 140 folks who are going to be covered by this grant, or are they all post-COVID hires that the county is contracted with?
So I'm going to say about 98% of these staff members are new to the program. We have some existing like management leaders, bureau, the directors of Disease Prevention Program that are covering it. We've had folks that moved over and vacated positions in other bureaus, for example, School Health, over. So these are all newly hired for this program.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have one, but...
Okay. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I don't believe that with any of this legislation, we got copies of these agreements or anything like that. Is that something you can share with the council? Because I'd love to see this crisis cooperative agreement and kind of a little bit more detail. I mean, we get kind of a listing of what you intend to do, but $4.8 million is a lot and so I'd love to see kind of really broken out exactly what the money is intended to be used for.
Sure. So would you like to see the agreements and the budgets that we have submitted to the state and been approved?
That would be amazing. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So if 98% of the 140 staff members are new, what happens with those positions and individuals when we turn the corner and are no longer talking about COVID-19 in this way?
Because they're county contractual positions, the agreement between the employee and the county can be ended at that time. Speaking on behalf of the Health Department, we envision the COVID program to be a continuing program once this pandemic has subsided, just like flu-type of programs, the HIV AIDS programs, that they become a part of our everyday business. So it won't be as big a scale as it is now. It will be a smaller-scale operation within the Health Department.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Pennley, you're on the hot seat, sorry.
It's okay.
So with the 140 folks that you have working for you, if you scale down the program, what are you anticipating is going to be the sort of normal staff that you're looking at? I guess I'm just trying to think of this as today, there's a request for a large pot of money for a large staff, but you anticipate at some point that'll shrink. How do we see kind of paying for that going forward in future budgets? Obviously, these grant funds are not going to be around forever, so at some point, this is going to turn into these folks are not contractual, they now become county full-time positions, I'm guessing, and then you're going to be coming back asking for more positions relating to that. So is there some thought by the Health Department on where this is going?
The Health Officer and Deputy Health Officer for Public Health is following the trends and reports coming out from Johns Hopkins and various other groups to see where we're going in the future. And I'm going to defer to the Health Officer to say where, you know, he thinks we're going on that, but our intentions are if we, you know, intend to keep the program going, we will go through the county budget process and ask accordingly.
Okay.
All right, let's open the public hearing and come back to questions. So, opening the public hearing on Bill number 8921. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
All right, and we have one person who signed up in advance, William Love, who is still not here, apparently. Okay. If anybody would like to speak on Bill number 8921, please come down to the table now. Your remarks will be limited to two minutes. Mr. Dull, go ahead.
Thank you. David Dull, 534 Heavy Tree Hill. I am not speaking on behalf of the Libertarian Party on this. I just wanted to note that last Monday, November 8, the Saginaw Township Community Schools put the following press release on their website. "All Saginaw Township schools will be closed today, Monday, November 8, due to staff shortage. Staff members will not report. Childcare and after-school programs, including swim school, are canceled. The Board of Education meeting will still take place. A large number of our staff had a negative reaction to the COVID booster shot given at a voluntary clinic over the weekend, resulting in absences today. There is a substitute teacher staff shortage throughout the state, further complicating the availability to cover those absences." So they shut down a whole school due to adverse reactions from adults for these vaccinations and the boosters. And now we are using our children as guinea pigs for these vaccinations, for these vaccines that have been pushed through very quickly without the proper clinical trials. And I just think that's a very dangerous situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dull. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 8921 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 8921.
Bill number 8921, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Supplementary Appropriations.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, whose turn is it to go first?
They can go first.
Mr. Volkey, go ahead.
Oh, all right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Pennley, as the person from the Health Department here, I'm going to ask you this and if you can answer it, that's great. If not, just tell me that. But beside the county as the supplier of these vaccines and administering the vaccines, what other options exist currently if a student or a parent of a student wants to have their child vaccinated at this point outside of the county? Can you go to Walgreens? Can you go to CVS? Can you go to the hospital? Are there other places that are running vaccination clinics other than the county? That's really the question I'm getting to.
I would, just from my personal experience, but I'd like to defer on that, but I know go to Walgreens or CVS to get vaccinations. I mean, I personally had my son vaccinated at a CVS.
That was what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that there were those other options out there, that the county is not the only supplier or administrator, of the vaccines for children.
That is correct.
Okay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I know that you don't have this with you here today, but I'm hoping that maybe you can give some, you know, highlights of what the agreement is for Center for Disease Control Crisis Cooperative. Bullet points, high-level ideas overall? Any information?
That we would like to spend the money on or what has been outlined in the agreement?
What has been outlined in the agreement?
Training for emergency preparedness incident, working with the underserved community to get them educated, vaccinated, et cetera, doing a gap analysis and surveys of staff out there, new positions to boost our workforce, but also those positions to be able to recruit so that we are including equity, diversity, and inclusion out there.
Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. If I may add, these agreements have been provided to the council. Mr. Teroux, just confirm that for me.
Thank you. Ms. Hare?
Thank you. Can you first tell me when and then secondly, then I want to switch gears to the planning and zoning money?
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office. So as part of our inquiry with the Auditor's Office, as she prepares her blue letter, we provided all of the grant documentation, including the agreements.
Okay, but that went to Madam Auditor. Okay. I mean, they're not attached to the blue letter, is what I'm saying. So your, the agreements went to Madam Auditor, not directly to the council? Okay, thank you. With respect to planning and zoning, can someone tell me when the contract was signed for the study?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Teroux.
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office again. The council may remember back last year during the budget process that we included some money in planning and zoning for this study. Just due to delays in getting that contract signed, this money was actually appropriated last year and never spent. So if you went back to planning and zoning's budget from last year, you would see a savings. So essentially, we're re-appropriating, so the entire study money is included in the budget. In terms of timing of the contract being signed, I don't have the date, but I'm guessing it's very late in last fiscal year since we couldn't get the last year's contract paid on time.
Ms. Fiedler?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So I want to go back and touch on the emergency preparedness portion of the agreement. Is that strictly related to COVID-19 or is that beyond COVID-19 emergency preparedness?
Beyond. It's in general.
Your microphone. Thank you.
My apologies. It's beyond not just COVID-19, but in general, emergency preparedness incident situations.
Related to, I'm guessing, infectious disease?
It could be anything. The Health Department responds to weather-related incidents, whether it's a snowstorm or hurricane, but we also, you know, primarily, our focus is health-related, whether it's Ebola, Zika, or now COVID.
Thank you.
I'm going to sneak in my own comment here for a second. I've had, amongst my family members, we've gotten our COVID vaccinations at AACC, Bay Meadow, and Maryland Live, and every time we've gone, they've all been operated smoothly, no issues, no long waits or anything. So I just wanted to commend the Health Department for how you've operated those clinics throughout the past several months. And I especially liked the addition, when I took my five-year-old and 10-year-old to get their first COVID shots last week, the addition of lollipops in the 15-minute waiting area. I asked my girls if they could make their lollipops last 15 minutes and it turns out they could. What do you know? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I will share that with the Health Officer. And the lollipop tart, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. The $5.4 million that's going into, that's coming from the grants and special revenue fund, what's the source of that? Is that CARES money? Is that ARP money? Is that just general county money that's unappropriated that was put in there in the budget? Can somebody just refresh me on where that money's coming from?
That sounds like a budget question.
I thought it might be.
I can actually defer to Ms. Pennley. She knows most of the grant sources for the Health Department.
All six of the grants that are, or five of the grants that are on the bill tonight are from the Maryland Department of Health, so a state agency. There's one of them for $100,000 and that one is our core funds and the state did a switch out of their state general funds with ARPA funds, so they're sending the state piece in a separate account number, per se. It was appropriated for, but they want, for obvious reasons, to stay account for it in a different account number so it can be tracked for federal reporting.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Going back to the planning and zoning, I think maybe I asked my question poorly. So in the auditor's blue letter, it talks about how $200,000 was included for this impact fee study in FY22 budget, but that there was a contract entered for the analysis for $418,000. And so this 218 will fund the remaining amount. And so what I'm just trying to understand is, at the time the budget was struck in July, did we know, did the administration know that this was going to cost $418,000 and it just wasn't included in the budget? Or did this happen later? What, how come we're doubling all of a sudden?
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office. The contract, I believe, always was right around $400,000. When we first brought the study down for the budget in front of the council in FY21, it was a two-part study, I believe it was roughly $200,000 and $200,000, rough numbers. So it was always going to cross fiscal years. That first half of the study was not done in time to be paid out of FY21. And so therefore, we had included the second half of the study in the FY22 budget, but now we're just reconciling because that study was just delayed a little bit.
Okay, so we just should have included this 218 in the budget this year because we knew that money was going to be needed?
It was probably right around the time that we were trying to get that contract finalized, at the end of fiscal year '21. That PO never got paid in fiscal year '21, so now we've got to re-appropriate it, essentially. It's a timing issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Pennley, following up on my question to you from the Health Department and the funds you indicated came from the state, do you know the source of funding at the state level? Was that ARPA funds or CARES funds to the state that then they've put into the Health Department that then they're sending down to us? Or is it state general fund money?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 8921.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
An enthusiastic aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 8921 is passed.
Thank you to the panel. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 9021.
Bill number 9021, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service Department of Public Works and Police Department, Position Control, Office of Central Services and Department of Public Works.
Mr. Barron, when you're ready?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Got a couple of new faces with me. Pete Barron with the administration from Office of Central Services. We have Ms. Noonan from DPW. We have Ms. Henry and Mr. Klein from Personnel, Ms. Atkinson and Ms. Collins. And from Law, sticking with us, couldn't fit on the table, Ms. Kelly Kenny, but happy to give up my seat if you got a tough question. Bill 90-21 modifies minimum qualifications and adds positions in the classified service, modifies certain positions in DPW and Office of Central Services approved in the FY22 budget. This was discussed at the work session and point you to the auditor's blue letter and the distinguished panel here with me if you have any questions. We ask you move the bill this evening.
Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious what the, if there was particular motivation to, you know, to amend these job qualifications? Is this a recruiting? Is this changing, you know, job responsibilities?
I think the answer to that is yes. I'll point, because there's a, coming from a different, a couple of different spots. From Central Service, I know on our welder position, I don't think that's needed anymore. In DPW, we're creating some advancement series and we are also changing some qualifications for our surveyors and for our forensic chemists, we are changing minimum qualifications to meet COMAR requirements. And if anybody on the panel has anything to add, please feel free.
Any other questions? Okay. Then we will open the public hearing on Bill number 9021. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
Okay. And we don't have anyone signed up either. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill number 9021? Stand up now. Come on down. Okay, seeing no movement. The public hearing on Bill number 9021 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 9021.
Bill number 9021, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service Department of Public Works and Police Department, Position Control, Office of Central Services and Department of Public Works.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Fiedler? Oh, you're ready to vote. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 9021.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 9021 is passed.
Thank you to the panel. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 9121.
Madam Chair, may I just make a comment about some issues with the television station this evening?
Oh, certainly, please.
There are people who are calling in and reporting that there are outages. They are correct. There is an issue with the TV station. The OIT folks are working on resolving it.
Thank you.
Without further ado, Bill number 9121, An Ordinance Concerning Approval of Private Disposition of County-Owned Property, Consisting of Approximately 37.5 Plus or Minus Acres, Known as 1127 Bragg's Road in Odenton, Maryland.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me from AACPS is Mr. Shaknovich. And from Law... Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me from AACPS is Mr. Shaknovich. And from Law, Ms. Kenny. 9120 approves the disposition, I think I said this at the Work Session, I really dislike the term disposition here, because we are not disposing this property. We are going to build a school. The Board of Education will be using this property for the future development of an elementary school. The Council, this Council approved in March 2020 the purchase of this land. It is now time to hand it over to the good folks at AACPS to build us a school. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Please move the bill. It's a good bill.
Thank you. Any questions? We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 9121. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
Nor do we have anyone signed up in advance. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on Bill Number 9121? Ms. Johnson, are you coming down?
Trying.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you always say that, and they always ignore you.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I don't, I don't have a lot to say about the bill, per se, except that how big is this elementary school going to be, you know, in terms of adequate facilities, which we've been talking about? You know, how many students will this accommodate? Is this related to development by some of our energetic developers who want to develop some land and they need more public facilities? Does anybody know anything about this? And has it been discussed elsewhere that I missed out on? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. The public hearing on Bill Number 9121 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9121.
Bill Number 9121, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of Private Disposition of County-owned Property, Consisting of Approximately 37.5 Plus or Minus Acres, Known as 1127 Braggars Road in Odenton, Maryland.
Mr. Barron? And do we have any questions? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Shaknovich, this one's for you. What is the current policy with respect to after-hours use of Anarundale County Public Schools' properties by the Department of Wreck and Parks? Because I've heard from some people that there was a long history in this county where, because obviously we purchased these properties and then we transferred to the Board, and the Board builds schools and all these things, and this great partnership exists between the county and the Board, that it's always been during the day, the school controls the site, and in the evening, Wreck and Parks uses it. But I've heard that that's not really continued, and I heard there might be some policy change on that. Can you speak to that at all?
Certainly.
We'll speak to you, yeah.
Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. It is correct that we've been in a longstanding MOU with the county government, Recreation and Parks. In that sense, it is, it's loosely, as you described, and the way it works essentially is the school system is essentially the principal and only user during the school day. Benders, Tier 2. Tier 2 is school-sponsored, school-affiliated functions outside of the school day, i.e. if we had our varsity athletic team or a school dance concert, et cetera, that would sort of essentially be Tier 2. Tier 3 is where Wreck and Parks kicks in, and Wreck and Parks has their own facility use standards and guides that govern their usage, their permitted activities, not permitted, but permitted activities under their parlance. And then there are a final tier, which is rentals, which could be for tournaments or other, other sort of activities. So there is sort of a tiered structure. It's governed by the MOU principally internal to the Board of Education. We have a facility use manual that sort of governs our decision-making algorithm, and Recreation and Parks has essentially the same structure to govern their decision-making authority and prioritization or triaging of facility use requests.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Follow-up to that question. So has there been any change to that in the last few years, the prioritization or in the ability of Wreck and Parks or even outside user groups to use Board of Ed facilities?
To some extent, yes. I mean, obviously, during the current health situation that we find ourselves in, there has been some curtailment in utilization. We do periodically meet, outside of health-related constraints, which is a near-term issue, we periodically meet with Wreck and Parks, A, because the MOU gets, gets re-signed, re-cutified essentially, and then we meet together strategically to make sure that our practices are aligning and that we're communicating. That's at a macro level. At a micro level, there's daily communication, because again, should elementary school A or middle school B schedule some sort of a function, there has to be a way for us to telegraph that information to Wreck and Parks so that they in turn don't run out of facility or schedule another user at that time. So there's staff-level communications that's ongoing. At a higher level, the two entities meet and confer to, A, renew the MOU, and B, meet and confer to review policies and practices.
Mr. Pruski.
Yeah, Councilman Pruski, just for the benefit of the record, Ms. Johnson asked what this property was. This is the overcrowding that's been going on in Crofton through Odenton because of Fort Meade growth. So that's the answer to that question. But I did want to talk to, one other question, Mr. Shaknovich. We have an infrastructure bill from the federal government that, that obviously is getting passed. Has there been any discussion about accelerating any of these projects? I know Mr. Volkey's district has several areas of schools that were crowded. I could probably go through each one here. We've talked about that prior, but to move these along. So I don't know if you have any update on that. Again, I know it's just fresh, new, but I'd be curious if there's any discussion on that.
Again, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer for the School District. The, the infrastructure bill that was apparently signed just hours ago really does not appear to have a dedicated funding source that would fund the ground-up construction or renovation of schools in the mannerism that you're speaking to. So no with respect to that. I will remind the Council, though, that in the last General Assembly session, the state of Maryland passed a bill, the Maryland Built the Schools Act, that allowed the Maryland Stadium Authority to sell revenue bonds that can be used for the purposes of designing, constructing, replacing, or comprehensively renovating schools. So while the federal government, according to our best read, again, three hours or so old, it does not look like it, that most recent action by our General Assembly, though, will in fact accelerate the pace at which we can undertake public school construction activities here with this, within the state of Maryland, because the MSA monies, Mr. Pruski, are supplemental to, not surplanting of, the traditional IAC funds that, that we've all been operating under since the 1971 or so. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Shaknovich, just picking up where I was. I think the point that I'm trying to get at is, everybody up here wants you to get the school. Everybody up here wants you to get the land to build the school. I just want to make sure, and I'm trying to bring some attention to an issue that I think is out there, which is, are we ensuring that the Board is being a good partner on the back end to make sure that the county, which is purchasing the land and then giving it to the school board to build the schools and is funding it and all of that, are we also getting some benefit from the Wreck and Park angle? And also, are the taxpayers and constituents getting some benefit to be able to use these facilities when they're not otherwise in use by the school or by that Tier 1 or Tier 2 use? So I think that's just what I'm trying to understand, and that's why I keep asking, has there been a change in the policy? Because my understanding from people is that there used to be more ability to use those facilities, and that's now tightened up. And the schools, I heard, it was something that happened at the school board, that they've changed the policy and it's become harder to get that use. So that's where I'm going with that. And if you know of any policy change specifically by this Board of Education, I'd be interested to hear about that.
So Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer for the School Board. I'm not aware of any policy, policy level changes. Our facility policy has not been recently amended by the Board of Education. I do say that we, you know, we, like Wreck and Parks, like every unit of county government, I hope, is diligently reviewing any applicant to make sure that it comports, again, with, with the policies, with the procedures. We do identify user groups that don't align with our policy. I suspect that's likely the case with Recreation Parks. On occasion, we do have to say no. That is, that is a very rare occasion. Going back to your, to your first point, it has been studied here in this county a number of times. Some, they all predate, predate your, your position here in this council. The ability of county government to partner with the school district in order to develop facilities in the manner that we do is, in my humble estimation, probably the best value proposition that we have here in Anarundale County. Because think of the cost for Anarundale County to go out, acquire land, build parking lots, develop facilities, heat and cool, maintain them, et cetera, separate and apart. If we own an asset, we, no, government, we, the public sector, own an asset, and we can utilize that from morning to four o'clock, say, for primary school function, potentially four to six, there's, you know, some shared overlap, and then six to nine or 10, we are extending the value that that initial capital investment gets by more hours per, per dollar invested, essentially. And so that's the value proposition. That's a model that we've adopted here in Anarundale County. It's wildly successful. We're, many jurisdictions around us are envious of the model that we have here, the close collaboration we have with Wreck and Parks. Some other counties took a different path, invested bunnies into facilities, continue to invest monies into facilities. That's a decision that they've made. But again, in my humble estimation, the way that we do it here is the most prudent and fiscally responsible model in terms of working together, collaborating, cohabitating on a single piece of property, because we're maximizing the usable hours of that initial public investment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you for the turf fields that my children play on every weekend with their youth sports soccer team. So thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9121.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9121 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9221.
Bill Number 9221, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Budget, Grants, Special Revenue Fund, Limitation on Conditional Appropriation.
Ms. Fiedler, since this is your bill, you can have the floor first when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So we, we talked at length about this bill in our Work Session, but just a quick recap. So we started getting letters as laid out by the administration on the expenditure of the ARP money, American Recovery Plan Act. And the administration did share that there was an internal work group that was put together to kind of review and yea or nay how the money was spent. But as we were getting these, I started getting questions from residents in my district on, well, what is the money being used on? And is the Council weighing in? So I started doing a little digging to understand where this section of our code came from, the Grant Special Revenue Fund, specifically the conditional appropriation of unanticipated grant revenues, and learned that this section was added in 2008 as a way to mitigate the large volume of grant legislation that was coming before the Council, even as small as $25. I don't think that, at that time, that Council or administration ever anticipated that this body or this county would receive $112 million in federal grant money that could be spent within every single department, including quasi-government agencies and beyond. So I just think it's important that we reevaluate in light of the grant funding and the amount of grant funding coming to the county, to make sure that the Council is involved or has the ability to be involved to some degree. Now, I do understand the administration's concern on turnaround time. I certainly do not intend to or do not want to increase the length of time to get this money out the door and to the appropriate departments or what have you. So I have an amendment that will be brought forward at the appropriate time to address those concerns, and I look forward to the discussion on the bill.
Mr. Barron.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll introduce our panel from Budget. We have Mr. Teroux, Mr. Trumbauer from Finance, Ms. McQuaid, and Mr. Beard. And from Law, Ms. Kenny is with us. As, as the sponsor noted, we discussed this legislation at the Work Session. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trumbauer for a few comments, and then if that one doesn't move, try this one.
I'm like in no man's land here. Apologies, Counsel. I was sitting in between two microphones, but happy to get you now. Chris Trum, I have the Budget Officer. As the sponsor indicated, we've had a robust discussion about this in an internal meeting, and then again, at the Work Session. I won't go through all of that again. I do just want to remind the Council, the administration's committed to transparency and accountability of these ARP funds. We send you a report of all the approvals every month. I believe you get that by the 20th. We also post that online for interested residents to view, as well as a summary dashboard of all the ARP fund spending, and we'll continue to do that. And as you know, we give you notification in advance of any approval that is over $500,000 or more. So you have the ability to ask us questions or talk through that. It takes us a while to get money out the door. So if you do look at our graphic, you see that although we've approved a fair amount of the funds to be spent, the actual encumbrages are lagging behind. And we are working with our Procurement Department and Office of Law to expedite that, because these funds are funding a lot of good programs in the community, and we want that money to land and start doing the good work. So as the sponsor indicated, we do have some concerns with the bill as written. I think it's a little overly broad with what it would require us to report. We're certainly happy to discuss any amendments at the appropriate time, but we'd ask you not to pass the bill as written. And the administration is more than willing to work with the Council to provide whatever reporting or accountability measures that you guys want. And for any specifics, we have our friends from Finance here that can answer, and Stephen also knows the Budget forwards and back, too.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Trumbauer, what accountability or reporting requirements would the administration be okay with? And why is it that this bill, which requires the Council to actually approve these grants, is a problem? So I heard some of your comments over the loudspeaker, and I understood it. But if we were to increase the grant threshold to, say, $500,000 or $1 million, would that alleviate the concerns that the Budget Office has?
Thank you. Chris Trum, our Budget Officer. I'm sorry, Counsel, can you, were you at the Work Session? Can you remind me?
I was.
You were, okay, yeah. So we talked about this, and I may defer to Stephen or Michael to go on the details, but the way the, the bill is written, I don't believe it's specific just to ARP funds. It would affect all the grant funds. And it would require us to bring forth legislation anytime there was significant movement in that. You guys have pretty full dockets already. I think we had some estimates at the Work Session of how much this potentially could put on your plate. And to be clear, if that's what the Council wants, we will do what you guys want. But it seems, seems to me, as a former Council member, that that would add a lot to your workload on, on, for the most part, something that I think would, would not be super exciting. But we're happy to provide whatever information that the Council wants.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So just to acknowledge that comment and, and say that I believe the amendment will address those concerns.
Okay. I think we can open the public hearing on Bill Number 90- I think we can open the public hearing on Bill Number 9221. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
All right. We do have two people who signed up ahead of time to speak, and if others wish to speak on Bill 9221, I ask you to please come down now as well. Believe you all know this, but of course, please begin by stating your name and address for the record, even if you've said it before today, and then you'll have your two minutes. Ms. Polium?
Hello? Okay. So yes, my name is Dawn Polium. I'm from Crofton, Maryland. I do not support the amendment, but I do support this bill because it follows the intent of the Constitution. By having our legislative, legislative branch control the purse by appropriating funds and allows the county council to review the small print, the constraints and requirements of our county executive agreed to prior to receiving those grant funds. Bill 9221 requires county council approval of spending for grants greater than $300,000 versus the current model where the county executive and his self-appointed work group has unlimited and uncontrolled spending powers over our grant money. County, state, federal, or local funds are still taxpayer funds and should be governed the same, no matter where the source comes from and the level of funding. Whereas the legislative branch, the county council, controls the purse and passes legislation, while the executive branch, the county executive, approves and executes the bill passed by the council. This is the checks and balances with accountability and transparency that's embedded in the Anaronda County Code, the Maryland and U.S. Constitution. This is smart policy, independent of the person or party that is in control. The $4.6 million for the vaccination incentive is, whereas there was a $1,000 bonus for those who were already vaccinated and a $1,000 stipend for those, to incentivize those to get the vaccine, is one example of many to come. And we could lead, then this could lead to misappropriation of our taxpayer dollars if we do not guarantee checks and balances. Large expenditures like this should and must include approval by our elected officials, which are you, our legislative branch, the county council. We must remind ourselves, this money is not monopoly money, whether it's from the federal or state or local.
Thank you, Ms. Polium. Mr. Svensson?
Hi, Kurt Svensson, 934 Juliet Court, Arnold, Maryland. In 2008, the county council approved Bill 2908, creating Section 411114 of our code, which first established the Grants Special Revenue Fund. The conditional appropriation of unanticipated grants subsection was developed cooperatively between the administration and the auditor and was intended to avoid a high volume of bills amending the budget whenever grant funding amounts changed from their original estimate, as included in the annual budget in May and June of each year, or the appropriation authority for a given grant was needed in the ensuing fiscal year because it wasn't fully expended by the end of the previous year. I know a lot about that original bill because I was the Assistant Budget Officer at the time and was the architect of this new special revenue fund and championed the concept of this conditional appropriation authority. Let me make it very clear, the current use of Section 411114 with respect to COVID relief funding is not consistent with the intent of this section of county code. While including in the annual budget document a bunch of $1,000 line items in relation to grants within particular departments technically meets the condition that it was included in an ordinance appropriating funds, the presumption was that a good faith estimate would be made with respect to the amount of funding to be awarded and that the specific spending plan was subject to review and approval by the county council. The idea that millions of taxpayer funds distributed by Anaronda, to Anaronda County government can be expended without review and approval by the county council, the final fiscal authority, is unconscionable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Ms. Leahy?
Amy Leahy, Severna Park, Maryland, and I'm testifying on my own behalf tonight, not representing any organization. Thanks for the opportunity to testify in support of Councilwoman Fiedler's bill regarding grant appropriations, transparency, and oversight. County Executive Pittman promised transparency in his administration if elected. Transparency and including the public in his decisions and oversight was what he campaigned on. The county council many years, years ago had oversight and approved all grants the county was awarded in order to ensure future fiscal viability and continuation of the grant using county funds if necessary, when the grant was no longer available. In the case of the COVID money that has poured into Anaronda County over the past year and a half, all decisions on how it was spent have been made solely by the Pittman administration without county council oversight or input. Our government is a representative democracy, not a democracy, which means that we, the populace, speak through our elected representatives. In this case, it's you, our county council members. For the county executive to make such, such decisions as, one, spending the money on credits to people who needed help with their Anaronda County water bills is using sleight of hand to hide the ball since the money is returned straight back into the county's funds. Second, by using the grant money to pay for rent, but not for keeping our local businesses afloat and actually targeting local restaurants last December, is showing discrimination to our local small business owners. And my favorite one, paying county employees and commissions and boards to get the COVID shot at $1,000 each, which is a free shot, by the way, is a mockery of what this money was intended for. Using American Rescue Plan funds in excess of $112 million without input from our elected officials is an abuse of power that Pittman has been entrusted with. Please pass this bill so that each one of you can be the voice of your constituents.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Very well timed. Mr. Dahl?
David Dahl, 534 Heavy Tree Hill, Severna Park, Maryland, Chairman of Anaronda County Libertarians. I feel like the three people to my left just stole my wind. They pretty much just said everything I wanted to, except for, this is monopoly money. It's fiat currency, and the Federal Reserve is just printing up trillions every, every year, which is why we're seeing the high inflation that's destroying our economy. And I could blame Biden, but of course, it's both the Republicans and Democrats. But it's a great idea to have transparency, and like she said, that's what Pittman ran on, so I don't understand why this is such an issue from the Pittman administration, as they just said. So I'm really confused, maybe if you could answer or explain to me that, but yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill Number 9221? Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 9221 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9221.
Bill Number 9221, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Budget, Grants Special Revenue Fund, Limitation on Conditional Appropriation.
Thank you, and I think we shall go into the amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes a general limitation on certain appropriations to the Grants Special Revenue Fund and instead adds a condition that the county council approve appropriations of more than $500,000 to the Grants Special Revenue Fund funded by fiscal recovery funds. Adds an approval process for the county council that may be triggered by three or more council members, and adds a sunset provision.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I do want to start by thanking Mr. Svensson for his historical knowledge on this section of the code. While I can recap what was given to me in notes, firsthand account is always helpful. So this amendment addresses the generalization by identifying, and it's said here, the local fiscal recovery funds distributed by the U.S. Treasury, and the reason for that is that is the language that is used in a lot of, all of the documentation going back and forth. I did increase in this amendment the threshold from $300,000 to $500,000, and then changed the process entirely from the original bill so that it says that with the request of three council members, a resolution could be brought before the council for review and vote. And what that essentially does is cuts down the time that a traditional bill would require, doesn't have to sit out for advertisement and have that, that longer lifespan. And I did reach out to my colleagues and explained where the three council members came from, because there was some questions regarding that. So in Section 208D of our charter, the emergency legislative session can be called by request of three members. Knowing that getting this money out to those who have requested it is emergent in nature, I felt that this was unlike any other resolution that we have had to date. This is new territory. So I just pulled the wording of three council members from that section of our charter and applied it here. Would love to have my colleague's support on this resolution amendment, this, bill amendment this evening, and happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to adopt? So moved. Who's? Ms. Hare?
Hare, so moved.
Fiedler, second. Okay. Mr. Barron?
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. Again, this is really up to the council. It's what you want to receive. The administration will be happy to provide with whatever you want. Thank you for explaining the three members bit. I did not understand that. I'm, before you explained that, I was not aware of any other thing where, where a non-majority of the council could take an action. The one thing that I would say to this, you, you basically have the ability to do almost this already. With anything that's $500,000 or more ARP, we give you notification. At that point, any council member is welcome to say, I have questions about this. Will you come to the next council meeting? Will you entertain our questions? That's why we give you notice. So if, if that's, if that's what you want, you know, we, we can work with you without a, you know, without a bill, but this is along the lines of, of what we would prefer over the original legislation, and this is a, a policy decision for the council.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I appreciate that, Mr. Trumbauer. I know we were playing a bit of phone tag. It's been a busy legislative week. I, I do want to say I appreciate the recognition that there is an alternative, but that alternative without this bill doesn't include a vote by this body, and I think that that is critically important, considering our role in, and our fiscal authority as written in our charter. So I appreciate that, but I, I do think it is important.
Sure. And Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. I don't want to monopolize the mic if anyone else on the panel has thoughts on this amendment. Okay?
Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This might be a question for the sponsor, but maybe the panel could weigh in as well. My concern is, what happens, what, this is sort of a hypothetical, but what were to happen if the council continually declined to approve appropriations? You know, like when we talk about our budget process, we have a very specific path that we follow. If the council doesn't approve the, you know, if, if we don't, you know, vote to support the budget, it goes back to the county executive's originally proposed budget. But I'm not sure what path we go to here. What is the next step? Is it just kicked back to the county executive's office to make a new choice, saying, we don't like that choice, pick something different? And then what happens if we continue to go down this path? You know, at some point, you know, ultimately, the county executive is going to be making, you know, making the decision about what path to follow. So I'm, I'm curious, it's not laid out here, so I'm curious what that would be.
Is that a question to me?
I guess I was originally directing it at the sponsor, but I said that the panel might be willing to weigh in.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I, I first want to make sure that those watching, listening, understand that this amendment would require a request of three council members for a resolution that would allocate certain grant funding to a program, and a program or all of the lists of projects, et cetera, that the grant money is going towards. If there are not three council members who want to bring the resolution forward, then that expenditure takes place. If there are three council members who would like a public discussion on an expenditure, the resolution comes before the council. There is a opportunity for us to discuss with the panel, whoever is sitting in front of us, and then it would require four votes, just like any other resolution, to approve the expenditure. If four council members voted against the resolution, then I would think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Trumbauer, the administration could then work with the, the council to figure out what the snag was, perhaps even proactively, and bring another resolution forward that fixes the problem, then you get the four votes, and then the money goes where it was recommended to go. Am I right?
Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer. My reading of the amendment would be if a resolution was brought forward and the council rejected that, we could not do that expenditure. What happens after that point, I, I think, is going to depend on what the council's concerns were, how the administration would want to move forward. I don't think it would guarantee that something similar would get done. It, it might stop it in the tracks. I, I don't know. But my, my read of the amendment is, for, for more than, for $500,000 or more, we bring a resolution to the council upon request of three members. If, if the council were to reject that, that ends that expenditure, and we would go back to the drawing board. So for instance, if there was a hypothetical expenditure of $5 million for vaccination and it was rejected, then we wouldn't be able to do that. We'd have to go then work with the Health Department and say, okay, what are we going to do next? I can't, I can't speak to what the solution would be if the council rejected that, but we would have the option to bring something else forward to you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Just for the benefit of the viewing public, so typically in Anaronda County, when we've done the budget, the old statement was that there was maybe between $50 and $70 million a year of money that we had to kind of play with, quote unquote, as the council, and some of that was already eaten up by required spending increases in different contracts and things like that. So often during the budget process, this council was really only, in a $2 billion budget or 1.8 or wherever we were in that given year, was really focused on kind of that discretionary amount of money right there that we were allowed to spend on certain things, and that was typically less than a $50 million number. The amount of money that's been spent by this administration, there have been $212 million in federal funds that have come down to the county through two rounds of federal funding that are now being appropriated by the county executive with basically no oversight from the council. There's reporting, we hear about it. So here are some of the things that that money's been spent on that is more than $500,000. $5 million for these $1,000 COVID shot bonuses. $3.9 million for these $1,000 premium pay bonuses. $4.2 million for the bus driver bonuses that are allegedly going to solve the bus problems. I have my doubts. I've expressed those doubts. $3.2 million to purchase an apartment building in Glen Burnie. None of these things have come through the county council for us to vet and look around and decide if we support them or not. They've all been expenditures that have gone through the county exec's office, and we have certainly gotten notice of them, but they're not things that we have a vote on, and that's what this will change. So I would ask for my colleagues' support on the bill itself, and I think the bill is an excellent bill even without the amendment, but I understand from working with Councilwoman Fiedler that this amendment may be what's necessary to allow this bill to pass, and so for that reason, I'm supporting it, but I really would love to see this bill go forward, even unamended. So I ask for my colleagues' support because I think it is important that we talk about we're the final fiscal authority. Let's make sure we truly are the final fiscal authority.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Volkey, for your comments. I, I just want to react to a couple of things. First, I think when you were talking about the 50 million First, I think when you were talking about the $50 million or ballpark in each budget, that's the incremental recurring revenue. It goes back and forth. It could be 50, it could be 80, it could be more than that. But I just want to remind the council that you have oversight over the whole budget, not just that little sliver. I certainly looked at the whole budget when I was up on the council and maybe you were just talking about the focus of that little bit. But I don't want to minimize the role the council has on the budget. I hope that wasn't your intention. The second thing is you listed a handful of expenditures that have been done through ARP funding. And each of those ones that you listed, I emailed the council as soon as it was approved to notify you, ask if you had any questions. Several of you have had some questions. No one has expressed a concern that they wanted to try and stop that expenditure. No one had asked us to come before the council and explain anything. You guys have that ability to do so right now. That's why we are giving you that notification. So I think it's a little bit unfair for you to characterize this as a completely unilateral decision in a vacuum when we have, the administration has determined to not only do the reporting requirements and post it to the website, but also to give you notification of anything that's over $500,000. And we do that not because it's law, but it's because we believe that that is the right thing to do and we want to be open and transparent with the council. You are the ultimate fiscal authority. So just wanted to be sure to characterize that posture from the administration.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I do have to make a correction. I did reach out to you when we received an overall view of some money that was being used in recreation and parks.
Yes.
I concluded with, we're just going to have to basically agree to disagree that this fits into the box that's been created. I think it was two electric bikes, some mowing equipment, dump truck or three. So I'm just going to have to correct that.
I'm sorry, Madam Councilwoman. What are you correcting? Can I ask?
That that no council member had reached out with concerns and disagreements.
I said that several of, sorry, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer, just to make sure that I was not misspeaking. I said several of you had reached out. You did, in fact, reach out about the Wrenckin Parks expenditure. I responded to you, gave you information specifically addressing your question. You acknowledged that receipt. So that was a question that was asked and a question that was answered.
Okay. My apologies. I thought you said had not.
It's maybe the mask didn't enunciate well enough, so I apologize.
Yes. And if I could, just one quick follow-up, Madam Chair. So I want to go back to not knowing what happens if a resolution for expenditure of grant money takes place. I would hope that knowing that this has been, this bill with this amendment has been elevated to the level of language that's in our charter for emergency meetings, that the administration, if you do not want to have a resolution fail, would work with council members proactively. We exchange communication all the time as bills are being worked on before they see the light of day. I would see no reason why the administration wouldn't be able to do the same if you want to get appropriation of grant money across the finish line. Is that also an option?
Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer, you're asking if we would if we would work with you before we introduce the resolution?
Yeah, I'm asking, when you answer the question, what happens if a resolution to appropriate $500,000 or more fails?
Yes.
What happens? You didn't know, and I get that. I would assume that you try and fix the whatever was the hangup. But I'm asking, would it also be possible to proactively share with council members in advance of introducing the resolution so that perhaps you could mitigate on the front end before you get to public discussion any?
Certainly, Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer, certainly, I mean, that's possible. And I think the legislative process itself gives notice and opportunity to interact. But I mean, to be candid, there was just before you a bill that appropriated 5 million dollars of grant money to the Health Department. If that had failed, then that appropriation would not have been able to happen. And I mean, that's the consequence of rejecting a request. So yes, if we put something before you, we will want you to support it and we'll do the work that it takes to put forth our case. But if the council were to reject it, it doesn't happen.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Trumpauer, you actually just answered my question as we just, four council members just made an affirmative vote on $5 point million plus for the Health Department. If that vote had failed, we would have been returning those dollars to the Maryland Department of Health and we would be sending our constituents to outside the county for vaccines. Is that basically what we, what would have happened?
Chris Trumpauer, Health Officer, I don't know the answer to the second part of your question, and I'm going to ask our friends in finance to confirm the first one. They handle the mechanics of what happens with money. We just budget for it. So maybe Mr. Beard can talk about what would happen to those state dollars.
Mr. Trumpauer, while Mr. Beard gets his mic ready, you're the budget officer, right? I think you said health officer.
I said health officer? Oh, no. No, no.
Just correcting.
Nobody wants that. We like Nalash just fine. Thank you.
Mr. Beard, go ahead.
Yeah, Michael Beard, Finance Office, Grant Accountant. As with all grant funds, if you're offered money, you have the option to turn it down. In which case, depending on what the grantor wants to do with it, it goes somewhere else at that point. State of Maryland is kind of notorious. If something's turned down, they turn it over to other municipalities and give them the opportunity to take it instead.
Thank you.
I'm going to intervene myself here in just a sec, or interject myself here for a second. Actually, I'm not, I'm not concerned so much with the current process that the administration is following, but more with that this funding we expect to, you know, continue to receive through the end of December of 2024 approximately. That's a long time for, you know, this body of people, which is going to be a different body of people in 2022, you know, to be to be tracking. No one knows what all those changes are going to be over the next couple of years. So I think this amendment is reasonable as far as an accommodation that both recognizes that, you know, the procedure that is being followed now is good. I'm not hearing that it's bad. I'm hearing we'd like to codify a procedure. And I don't think that's, you know, necessarily something to be afraid of. It's sort of like memorializing an agreement into a contract. And, you know, which ones are enforceable? The oral contracts or the written ones? It's the written ones. And so it seems to me that this is, you know, I wouldn't agree to the bill without the amendment. Sorry, Mr. Volkey. But I think the amendment is reasonable in what it addresses. So that's my comment. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was giving you snaps. Mr. Trumpauer, you mentioned that there's a way that we can somehow object to the spending that you've told us about over $500,000. I'm just curious what that mechanism is. And I don't know if that's somebody at Budget, Finance, or Law who can speak to that, but I'm curious what that is. Because I wasn't aware of that. I thought the way that these funds had come in and the way that they'd been appropriated in the budget with sort of placeholders and then you all coming down and saying, now we're moving this and doing that as the placeholder amount into this particular item. You were giving us notice because that's your way of trying to say, we want to keep you abreast of these changes that are happening over 500,000. But I didn't know there was a way we could object to it. So I'm curious what the legal mechanism is to how we can do that. Because if this bill fails, I want to know about that.
Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer, thank you, Councilmember. It's extraordinary to me that you don't realize you can object to things because you seem to do it pretty effectively most times. But yeah, you are welcome to object to anything the administration does. There's, you know, there's not a codified thing that we have to do about it, but we are very interested in working with the council as partners. So if if there's something that we are spending ARP funds on that we've notified you about and that you have objections, we are always interested in hearing about them.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I appreciate the answer to that question. I just, you know, in summary, I want to remind my colleagues that the vote earlier this evening, I think, shows the importance of dialogue in front of the public. And perhaps in the future, there will be a four, maybe there's going to be a five, too. I can't estimate how many resolutions will be requested by three council members to come forward. Certainly, I look at that report and some of those are just no brainers. They make sense to me and I wouldn't be the one requesting. But perhaps three of my colleagues would. I just cannot minimize the importance of this body in the grant approval process when we're dealing with a grant that we never, ever anticipated, nor did you. So trying to improve the process and I do request my colleague's support of this amendment tonight.
Any other comments? Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I only have one concern with the amendment, and that's the vote of three. Because we can't do anything on this council with a vote of three. And I would hate to start a precedent that takes us down. There's a lot of things going on in this country that would be great, could happen with a vote of 48, but they can't. I think we vote in this country by the majority and a vote of three is not that. So I don't approve of the amendment. I did prepare a second amendment that I'm not sure I'm still going to introduce, but which raises the threshold but leaves it as a vote of four to bring a public hearing before the body.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I just have to say we can take action with three and it's written in our charter for emergency legislative sessions. That's all.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Trumpauer, I appreciate the comment about the objection. I enjoyed that. But I'm still not clear. So if I send you an email and I tell you that I object to the way that you're choosing to spend ARP funds in one of your notices where you tell us, you're telling me publicly that you all are then going to bring down a resolution with that for the council to vote on? I just want to confirm publicly.
Chris Trumpauer, Budget Officer, I did not say that, Councilman Volkey. But again, I'm impressed with the way that you can string things together. That is good. In that instance, what I would do is I would then alert the county executive that a council member has concerns with this and I would discuss with the county executive and whatever team he wants to pull together what our actions would be.
So then what is the practical impact of my objection? Like if I tell you I object to the spending, it sounds like nothing actually has to happen. There's no triggering mechanism that forces it to come before this council or requires a public debate or discussion on the expenditure. Am I understanding that correctly?
The practical impact of your objection?
Right. If I object to you, you said you have every right to object, you're very good at it, you do it all the time. I said, you're right. That's fair. And so then you're saying to me, if I object, then something is going to happen. And I want to understand from you what's going to happen. It sounds to me like you're going to go talk to the county exec and then potentially you all may say, well, forget it. We don't really care what Volkey says. We're not going to do what he wants anyway. And you're just going to go on spending it. The difference with this bill is that it requires that these expenditures come before the council and we actually have a debate and discussion on them. What you're telling me the existing policy is, has no public actual discourse involved. It's simply me telling you I don't like it or I object and then you don't have to do anything about it. That's the difference. That's what this bill does. So when you're sitting here saying that we already have what we need, we don't. That's the point I'm trying to get at.
I have no reaction to that other than to say we want to be good partners with the council.
Okay. Got it.
Any final questions or comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. As this is an emergency ordinance, it can be amended and voted on on the same night. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9221 as amended.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 9221 is defeated.
And for those watching at home, that's because it takes five to pass an emergency ordinance. Thank you to this panel. Madam Secretary, when you are ready, please read the title of Bill Number 9321.
Bill Number 9321, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, Residential Development in Transit-Oriented Overlay Development Policy Areas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is my bill. As we discussed it at the work session, this bill allows for a limited amount of residential development that has to fit very specific criteria where the location, it would only apply to three areas in the county because these criteria are so specific. Those areas are, they have to be within a critical economic policy area, also within a transit-oriented development overlay area, and they have to be within one mile of an Amtrak or Mark rail station. And that means the three locations turn out to be the BWI rail station within a mile of that, the Savage Mark Station on the county side within a mile of that, and the Laurel Race Track Mark Station. Those last two are both on the Camden Line, for those who know and love the train lines for commuting. And the BWI gives you access to, the BWI stop gives you access to both Amtrak and the Penn Line on the Mark commuting line. So the requirement, if you want to build in this bill, the residential units that you can build would not only have to be meeting all of those requirements, but they would have to be dwelling units of fewer than two bedrooms, which really means units that have one bedroom, they could have one bedroom and a half, and that half is like a den or something that we know is not a bedroom, but it is an extra space, the kind of space that someone could use, for example, for being able to work from home and close off a door, but say there's no window, so it can't be a bedroom. And so it just is not able to meet that definition. The final criteria for this is that the development would need to have pedestrian and bicycle enhancements to facilitate the ability of a person to get to the rail station without having to get in their car. And that's part of why the one-mile radius is there is to ensure, especially for pedestrians, that you're close enough that you could go to the station without getting in your car. We know from experience, even people who live close to train stations such as Odenton, for example, if you're still a few miles away, you're still getting in your car to get to that station because there isn't a very safe way for pedestrians and bicyclists to get there. So the idea is to, overall, is to implement a couple of the different goals that we said we wanted to pursue in the GDP, also in the Move Inarondo Plan. And at different stages, this council has supported those ideas. So I think we should get moving. And why do we need it to be an exception to the school APF? That's a good question. That's because our school APF ordinance as currently in effect does not distinguish between dwellings that have fewer than two bedrooms and those that have two or more. Yet the school system has assured us that they consider dwelling units that are one bedroom to effectively generate no students. And we've seen that that has been the case in practice. At the Pearl Town Center, there are other examples. But the point is, since we don't have a mechanism in our law to allow residential development that does not generate students to go forward, we have to write an exception. That's the only way to do it in our current school APF. And as my, I'm sure will be brought up later in the discussion, everyone is probably aware there's a school APF work group and I'm sure they will have to consider this issue. But the reason I think this bill is timely now is these are all goals that we've said we want to pursue, they're achievable, and there's really no reason not to go forward with them at this time and allow this type of development to occur. It's checked all over our boxes. And so I brought this bill to remove this final hurdle for these kinds of developments. Okay. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair, joining me at the table.
Joining me at the table is Ms. Miller from OPZ, Mr. Badami from IMP, and Ms. Kenny, who has graciously stuck with us all night. I want to thank the sponsor for that introduction. I think you hit a couple of very important points. This administration has long maintained our commitment to smart growth for the county. Transit-oriented development, these critical economic policy areas are an important part of that strategy. So with that said, you know, we raised in the work session a couple of ideas, and they definitely were not ready for primetime, which is why, I think, to your point, on the school APF work group, we have been putting a lot of effort in addressing some of those barriers, like you're identifying here, about how student generation is calculated, the advancements in technology, the studies that, you know, I think Councilwoman Pickard noted, you know, could pile up across this entire table, that the work group has been reviewing and looking at incorporating into a future proposal. We need to make sure that every student goes to school with the appropriate ratio of seats to students. I will flag, the administration likes very much the focus in this bill on the pedestrian and bicycle access to transit. I think we all know Mr. Corin, he's reached out to me a few times from our Bike Commission. He's very excited about that provision. I think he was in contact with you. He wants a couple of additional tweaks that make it even a little bit better. But the administration would like to flag, I think that's a very important piece of the Move Anorundal Strategy, as well as incorporating and building livable communities. We do have concerns, like we flagged at the work session, but this is a narrow targeted area that is impacted. So in the end, this is a policy decision for this council. If the council decides to reject this proposal, the school APF work group will be looking at these very concepts. If the council decides to accept this proposal, the school APF work group will be looking at these concepts. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Ms. Miller, I think this question is for you. When I look at exemptions like this, if they indeed generate no children, it strikes me as very much to be similar to sort of the age-restricted developments. Do you agree that if there's a project, so it's only studios or one bedrooms, that it doesn't, there's no children generated under the formula that you all use for schools?
It won't move.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I would say that that's correct, but I also want to caveat that with, it's actually Anorundal Public Schools that determines the student generation rates that we use in our APF test. But that is the conclusion that they've come to at this time, after looking at a lot of data and projects.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So I'm going to piggyback on that question. Absent the formula, it is my understanding that there have been reviews about dwelling units of this nature, and in those reviews, there are zero students yielded. Could someone speak to that?
Again, Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. That is my understanding, again, based on study and review done by Anorundal County Public Schools, that projects with studios or one bedrooms are, in effect, generating, you know, negligible students.
Thank you. Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, I'm not sure who the best person to answer this question would be, but I really like a lot of things about this bill, but I have just a couple of concerns. And one of them is matching the type of housing that's needed. Do we have any sort of, I feel like we probably need someone from ACDS here tonight to maybe answer this question, but do we have any sort of assessment of the need for one-bedroom or studio dwelling units versus ones that, you know, could accommodate, you know, probably, I would say that those would generally accommodate, you know, one person or a couple, but probably not as likely to accommodate a parent and a child, or a couple and a child or children. Do we have any data indicating where the need is the greatest?
Pete Barron. I can try, Councilwoman. You're probably right. Our folks at ACDS have some of that. The school APF work group has looked at it. The Chamber of Commerce has looked at housing needs. I mean, the folks have been looking at it, and I think the answer generally is yes, we need more of all types of housing. The question is, will a bill like this generate additional activity? And I don't think we know, and maybe the sponsor can speak to that. But no, I don't know if we have a good answer to that.
Sarah Lacy, District 1. I would add that, well, I agree, first, we need all kinds of, all types of housing. I think that's already established. I haven't seen anything identifying, you know, any sort of proportion of what types of units we need and where they might be geographically, except that the land use plan that we adopted in the GDP touches on that idea through low, medium, and high-density residential housing. One thing about these units, I think, you know, no one should expect them to be, you know, entirely child-free, for example. You know, it would be perfect for, say, a young couple that is, you know, they're commuting by train to Baltimore or Washington, or up to New York, or who knows what, and they have a baby. Well, their baby is going to fit just fine in this fewer-than-two-bedroom environment. They'll probably outgrow that environment and want to move to a different one. So I think, to answer your question, I think there are a lot of different possibilities, which is what the market will then determine what the demand is, and folks who build this kind of housing are going to respond to that demand. Or not. If it turns out that, in fact, no one actually wants to live in any of these three areas that I've identified, well, guess what? Nobody's going to buy or rent a unit there. But I think that's not what would be expected to happen, but that it would be at least, for this purpose, by setting the, by acknowledging and creating a way to acknowledge that no students are generated, therefore, the school APF test should just not apply, then it allows sort of a springboard. Let's see what else could grow up around a project that is built like this. Does anyone else have a question or comment? All right.
Madam?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
I actually have a sort of related, well, just a related question. I guess with all of that said, I have a concern that, you know, that when we're looking at, you know, increasing development, increasing density in a transit-oriented location, that we're actually creating an environment where we're excluding, you know, larger family groups. So that, you know, if, you know, that situation where you described, you have a couple that has the baby, and then eventually they're going to outgrow that space. I'm concerned that we're not accommodating a family living in a transit-oriented development space by limiting it here, when ultimately that may be a perfectly appropriate place for a family to live, but then there's no options there for a family. So I understand that you're, you know, obviously trying to meet the APF, and that means you're going to limit it so there isn't a family, but in the long run, maybe that's a perfectly appropriate place for a family to live.
Sarah Lacy, District 1. I agree, and I think that what would happen in that case would be, you know, other people will come along and assess, "Hey, we'd like to build units with more bedrooms here," and they're going to have to meet all the requirements for developing in those spots, and through the regular process, or whatever new process we have at that time. But I'm not, at least, I'm not contemplating that this means that everyone within a one-mile radius is suddenly covered in, like, one-bedroom units. I don't think that'll happen. There'll still be space and consideration for that. It's sort of a plant-a-seed, I think, is what we would see. Anyone else? Comments? Questions? Okay. Then we are going to open the public hearing on Bill Number 9321. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Madam Chair, we did receive one submission of testimony through the online testimony tool. It was shared with the entire council. It's been added to the record and included in the summary that is posted online.
Thank you. We'll now go to our live testimony. We have one person signed up, and anyone else who wishes to speak on this bill, please come down now. Mark Thompson?
Thank you for the opportunity to testify and support a council bill 9321. I'm Mark Thompson, Senior Vice President of Development at First Properties, affiliated with the Maryland Jockey Club at Laurel Park. It's great to see all of you in person. I'm excited to have been selected to serve on the county Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region 2, and appreciate your confirmation. I look forward to assisting the development of a regional plan to guide the implementation of the recently approved general development plan. However, I'm concerned that the county's adequate public facilities ordinance will hamper any progress. We support CB 9321, as it addresses an unforeseen consequence of the county's current adequate public facilities ordinance. As you know, there's an estimated 10,000 vacant seats in our school system. However, a lack of comprehensive redistricting has created de facto building bans in areas that desperately need new housing and economic development. While it's critical to have sufficient capacity in our school to support new development, the APF is now artificially restricting much-needed growth in critical economic development areas. This would allow, this bill would allow targeted development that would not impact our schools to occur in areas that are also supported by commuter rail stations. Allowing much-needed housing growth would create broader economic development opportunities in areas that have infrastructure in place to also encourage the use of rapid transit, a win-win solution. This bill is an important piece of a larger effort to address the unforeseen but negative consequences of APF. I've participated in the county's APF subgroup, and I'm supportive of the approach and efforts to date. Montgomery County has led the way in recognizing their APF.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Mr. Dales?
Thank you, Chair Lacy, and good evening to members of the council. I want to reinforce some of the comments that the chair made in introducing her bill, and highlight for everyone that this bill is not an exemption for buildings that generate students into our school system. It will allow a badly-needed housing type that does not generate students, according to the existing methodology used by Anorundal County Public Schools. It'll allow for that housing type in areas near transit, in areas that are also places that Plan 2040 recommends development take place. Currently, those projects are prohibited on the justification or basis of school capacity, even where we recognize they generate zero students. That just doesn't make any sense. And so in that regard, this bill is loaning fruit, or a quick fix, to a restriction that doesn't serve any purpose. So while the task force that we're all aware of continues its work and moves toward a more holistic solution, which may allow for families in these areas in the long run, and where we appropriately should allow for families, this bill allows housing in limited locations that are in accordance with Plan 2040's directions. I'm confident that the task force will address this problem countywide, but if we're looking to address it in only these select areas, this bill is the appropriate action for doing And it's consistent with what we already know about student generation. There are no potential burdens on our school system from doing this, and it will provide a badly-needed benefit, and I think this may address Councilwoman Rodvian's questions about demand. I represent JLB Residential, and they are looking to build exactly the type of project that we're talking about here. It is a project with only one bedrooms, and one bedrooms with dens, and studios. And the reason they're looking to build that is there is now a demand that has not previously existed for those types of projects.
Thank you, Mr. Dales. Mr. Dull? Oh, I'm sorry. What, Madam Secretary?
Could the gentleman here, could you just like?
Excuse me. Phil Dales, Live Volts and Simmons, 181, Harry S. Truman Parkway, Annapolis.
Thank you. Mr. Dull?
David Dull, 534, Happy Tree Hills, Fortin Park, Maryland, Chairman, Anorundal County Libertarians. First of all, Ms. Lacy, thank you for this bill. Like two weeks ago, I think this is a great idea, and we, of course libertarians, we want to deregulate zoning laws as much as possible. So this is a great first step. But like two weeks ago, when you legalized alcohol at Bingo, I think this does, this is a little short on our goals of deregulating the zoning restrictions. We would like to see some more mixed zoning, where people can live above where they work, therefore, they don't have to drive anywhere. But those ordinance are in place. So we could, maybe we could work on those in the future to broaden out this. I understand the government currently has a monopoly on education, especially for low-income parents. So we have an overburden with our school systems, but perhaps maybe giving people a choice on where they can send their children could unburden the education system so that we can find alternative solutions. But in the meantime, I do understand it's the government's responsibility to make sure that there are enough schools for all of the people living here. So I think this is a great little niche that you've created with this bill, and thank you very much.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Dull. Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I concur with the other people who have testified. This is an insightful bill, innovative, and intended to really provide some needed presidential I am concerned that, there is a phrase that's used in a lot of places, "Stuff expands to fill space, and then to exceed space." So since we are talking about people riding bicycles, maybe rollerblades, you know, other, skateboards, I mean, you know, well, you've seen the different kinds of assisted propellers, you know, devices of assisted, you know, transportation. I do hope that you will require that the builders and developers provide, quote, "parking spaces" for these additional supplies, because that's built into the thing, you know, into the plan, that you're going to be walking up to a mile. And then I'm also really concerned, and I've testified before, about the need for affordable housing. If, you know, if you're going to do these kinds of things, hopefully, at least, you know, some minimal fraction of them will be allocated to, you know, and dedicated to this urgent need, you know, and then these folks can get to their jobs and so on. And then there's one other thing, that people have larger wardrobes than they did, you know, in, you know, 1920. People need closet spaces for their summer clothing and their winter clothing, their recreational clothing, and their, you know, dress clothing. And so there needs to be adequate closet space for all of those clothes, and linen closets as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. This panel is dismissed. And is there anyone else who wishes to speak on Bill Number 9321? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 9321 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9321.
Bill Number 9321: An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate School Facilities, Residential Development, and Transit-Oriented Overlay Development Policy Areas. Development in Transit-Oriented Overlay Development Policy Areas.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, I have some concerns that are similar to my colleague, Ms. Radvian. I understand, I very much understand the need for a full overhaul of our adequate public facilities ordinance, as I am on the school work group currently, and we are doing an intense meta-analysis of lots of different data points. But the school APF aside, because this council has, at times, made small exemptions within our school APF as it currently stands. This bill is meant to encourage and incentivize transit-oriented development, and while a barrier could very well be seen, a school, a meeting school APF is one of them, there's other components to TOD that make for a good community. The mixed-use component, when you mix residential and commercial and entertainment with your park and your bike and pedestrian walkways, it's more than just high-rise apartments that make a good transit-oriented development community. In our town centers, like in our Odenton Town Center and Parole Town Center, which is often cited as an example, there are proffers that were part of those different incentives where the developer, the investor, was also investing in the surrounding community. And that's one thing I feel is missing from this, the iteration of this bill. I still have my reservations, but it's not solely based in the school APF concern. So I just wanted to put that on the record because it might seem strange, my vote might seem strange to some folks.
Any other? Ms. Radvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have another concern with respect to, that I just actually maybe want to ask if the sponsor would be willing to consider a hold to create an amendment, but my thought is, you know, when I'm thinking about this, I think about the Parole Town Center, which is, you know, a pretty good example of transit-oriented development. Even though not all the transit is there yet, it's definitely ready for, it's ripe for it. The housing, though, at Annapolis Town Center, there's nothing affordable about it, and I do think affordability is a key component that needs to be included in transit-oriented development. So I'm curious, I'm considering making a motion to hold the bill to work with the sponsor to add an amendment that would, you know, and we all, I think we all know that the need for affordable housing in our county is very, very high, but to, you know, actually, as Ms. Johnson said, you know, set aside a certain, does she leave? I'm saying something about her and I don't see her now. But maybe like some certain set aside, you know, I know, you know, something like an MPDU, but just specifically for this, for this bill. So I guess I'm asking the sponsor if she would be willing to consider something along those lines.
Thank you, Ms. Radvian. Sarah Lacy, District One. I'm not, I think it's, affordability needs to be addressed separately. We've worked on drafts of various things related to affordable housing or including portions of, like some, setting aside a number of units that have to be affordable, and I'm very happy to work on that as a separate effort, but I don't think it's necessary to hold up this bill. I mean, we don't currently have overall requirements that housing include affordable components. It's all part of a bigger picture. So I'm not, but of course you can make the motion, and I, as chair, will chair the meeting according to your motion, so putting my chair hat back on. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Ms. Radvian?
Actually, I would like to make that motion to hold the bill in order, for the purpose of looking at an amendment to, you know, accommodate affordability.
And when would you like to hold the bill to?
Let's say, what is it, December 6th? Is that our next?
It is.
December 6th.
Is there a second on the motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 9321 to December Hearing none. The motion fails. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9321.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Chapuski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 9321 is passed.
Thank you to the panel. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9421.
Bill Number 9421. An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning: Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay Area; Transit-Oriented Overlay Development Policy Areas.
Mr. Barron?
Actually, this is Ms. Pickard's bill.
My, I'm sorry. I'm looking ahead in my script. Okay. Ms. Pickard, please.
I did turn my mic on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 9420 has been discussed at the work session. I have forwarded my colleagues the overlay development policy area map that this bill engages. Many of you know, last September, the Glenberne Overlay Sustainable Community legislation was passed unanimously by this council as we've moved forward through the redevelopment and both that and exploring transit-oriented development with both the county and the state, particularly the Cromwell Station, which is engaged in the Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay area. We wanted, this bill extends a very tight provision of school APFO exemption for certain kinds of mixed use if they fall within a designated, currently the bill has it, this provision in a, the town center, the very tight town center of Glenberne. This would allow the similar, the, well, the same exemption for school APF for the mapped area that incorporates both the Glenberne Sustainable Community and the transit-oriented development at the Cromwell Station. Many longtime residents in Anne Rondell County know that the Cromwell area is, has some vacancies and could use that shot in the arm of redevelopment, and this is one of those incentives to help spur that along. We're also working with the state for it to be designated a transit-oriented development to receive the Greater Washington, Greater Washington Partnership is studying this very closely. In order to receive the exemption, the development, number one, must be redevelopment. It must fall within the specific mapped area. It must be mixed use, and no less than 50% of the dwelling units consist of efficiency or one-bedroom units, and no dwelling units may have more than two bedrooms. Again, it's a, it's a small, tight area. It's an extension of what is currently allowed in the Glenberne Town Center, and I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Mr. Barron?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Sticking with me at the table is Mr. Badami from IMP, Ms. Miller from OPZ, and Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. I want to thank staff and the sponsor for working with us both on the bill last year but also as we're looking to tweak it. I guess if we could say the last bill was a scalpel, this is a laser. I mean, it's, it's very, very tight. The sponsor noted this adds transit-oriented development within the definition under the Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay. The key here is this is about redevelopment. This is targeting an area that particularly needs, I like how the sponsor put it, a shot in the arm. The administration is comfortable with this bill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barron. Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Ms. Miller, I'm going to ask you again because I was looking around for Mr. Seknovich earlier on the school utilization, I mean, on the generation of students. The two bedrooms, under the, under the formula, how many students do those generate if we're talking now about a different exemption from the school APFO?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I, I would need to consult with public schools to be comfortable answering that question. I know they have, they have generated reviews that have indicated efficiency in one-bedroom apartments are not having any significant student generation, but when you, when you phrase a question specifically regarding two bedrooms, I would want to defer to them.
Ms. Seknovich, do you happen to know? Ms. Pickard?
Well, he's coming forward. There, there is a formula and there is a percentage for two-bedroom units in certain student yield, and I'll let Mr. Seknovich speak to it, but I will tell you that this is the same provision that was in the overlay that we all voted for in September, but also there's an apartment complex in the Glenberne Town Center already that has apartments with the, to the extent of three bedrooms, and there are three students in that apartment building. Plus, the Parole Town Center has 1,100 units and it has about 10 students. So this is a very small, based on town center development. Then we're also talking about redevelopment, so keep that in mind. I'm not, I do not believe this bill is going to generate overcrowding levels of students for our schools.
Mr. Seknovich?
For the record, Alex Seknovich, so echoing the comments made by Ms. Miller, one-bedroom studio efficiency or one-bedroom den apartments, they don't create zero, but it's the minimus. It's minimal at best, and statistically, we don't account for them. So that's, I'm reinforcing the answer Peanzy gave you the first time. In terms of, in a redevelopment and the configuration that we're speaking to, it would likely be under 0.2 students per unit for a two-bedroom configuration. Again, our experience has been, in the type of development that Ms. Pickard's speaking about, they generally are not highly or densely populated with school-age K to 12 students.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Seknovich. Anyone? Okay. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 9421. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
We also have no one who signed up ahead of time. If anyone wishes to speak on Bill 9421, please make your way down. Mr. Dole?
You got some stairs?
Anyone else? Last call? Go ahead, Mr. Dole.
Thank you, ma'am. David Dole, 534, Heavy Tree Hills, Fortin Park, Maryland. So I'm just kind of confused on the revitalization. I'm familiar with the area, so I just kind of pulled it up on my Google Maps here, but we have the shopping center across the street, and then everything else is single-family homes, like, all over the area. So when we talk about redevelopment, like, are we talking about that shopping center or like a broader area? Because I thought it was a, it was a more of a targeted location, because then you have down Eighth Avenue, it's all like light industrial and heavy commercial. So like, are we putting more houses in there? Or like, what is redevelopment? Because sometimes when I hear redevelopment, I think gentrification. I was just, I mean, I, I know I can't have a discussion, like, you know, with these guys, but it just kind of seemed odd to me, so I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dole. Seeing no movement from the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 9421 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9421.
Bill Number 9421. An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development and Zoning: Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay Area; Transit-Oriented Overlay Development Policy Areas.
Are there any comments or questions before the amendment? Ms. Pickard?
Thank you. Since I have the opportunity, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll respond to the constituent that came forward. Just to peace of mind, this bill was written very, very carefully. It does not engage residential development. The parcel that would potentially be redeveloped has to already, one, have a structure on it and has to be R-15 or above, so it's not for R-5, single-family homes, to be demolished and putting up a parking lot. That's not what it's about. It's not to, it's meant to engage that vacant shopping center, that vacant gas station, that vacant fast food, and do something cool with it. It's not meant to, for gentrification. There are guardrails in the bill for that. Thank you. There is an amendment.
Actually, before we get to it, Sarah Lacy, District One, I have a question for the sponsor. Can you go into Section 18-14-601? The, this is the, on page two of the bill, the definition of redevelopment, where it is proposed to insert or expand the definition of redevelopment to include new construction on a lot or lots that are located in whole or in part within a TOD policy area as identified in the GDP. As I read this, at first I thought we were only talking about the Glenberne Town Center, but is, wouldn't this section apply anywhere in the county that we have TOD?
It's not written to say that. It's to talk specifically about the inside, this, this bill, this is, this, this bill amends the Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay, which is already a mapped area within the greater Glenberne area. So first of all, no provisions of this bill can be, can be accessed outside the Glenberne Sustainable Overlay area, which is a state-designated map. Inside that map is a TOD area, and only part of that TOD that also falls under the Glenberne Sustainable Community would be then subject to this, the provisions of this bill, the school adequate public facilities exemption.
Okay. Sarah Lacy, District One. I understand what you're saying, but I'm talking about the reverse. Ms. Kenny, perhaps this is a question for you. Looking at page two of the bill, lines 31 through 33, would that apply only in Glenberne, the Glenberne Town Center, or does it actually apply elsewhere in the county?
Sure. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. This would only apply in the Glenberne Overlay area because Title 14, other overlays in this specific subsection only applies to the Glenberne Town Center overlay.
Okay. As Title 14 of Article 18?
Right.
Okay.
Well, subtitle six.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else with a question? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Mr. Barron, I want your question comparing the previous bill to this bill on scalpel versus, I forget what, surgical tool, laser? Thank you.
Always lasers.
I guess, I'm, I'm just confused by that because there is a map included here, but if you go back to the GDP Volume One book, there is a map that illustrates the sections of our county that the previous bill was addressing, and they're like really tiny pieces. So I see it as both scalpel bills or lasers. Am I missing something as one so dramatically different?
Maybe we're splitting hairs. No. So the comment really was generated, the, the previous bill was three one-mile radiuses, although some of those radiuses extend to other counties where we don't have. But this is really quite narrow to add a small section to the Glenberne Sustainable Overlay area, so if we're talking about raw acres, I would, I haven't done the calculation, but eyeballing the maps, this bill is much smaller.
Okay. Thank you. Shall we go to the amendment? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment changes the terminology used in one of the conditions for the exemption from the test for adequate public schools in the Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay area to reference residential uses instead of multifamily dwellings.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is-
Overlay area to reference residential uses instead of multifamily dwellings.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is slightly confusing, so bear with me as I walk you through the language change. The concern is the way the bill, not necessarily 9421, but actually 6420, the original bill was drafted, could be construed that you could receive the school adequate public facilities exemption if you were for residential housing of any type, if you were including it in your mixed use. I wanted to make sure that any residential use that was put together in a mixed-use situation in the mapped, smaller mapped area for the exemption, all was subject to the bedroom modifications. It's a clarify, I didn't want anything, I didn't want people to think, oh, I've got, if it's multifamily, it, the way it reads now could be construed or interpreted as, if it's multifamily, the residential portion of the mixed-use development has exemption for 50%. I'm not being clear. I'm concerned that it could be construed that if you were building townhouses, you could get the APF exemption without the limitation of bedrooms. So, I want to make sure, I'm tightening up that language, all, any residential, I don't think there's going to be townhouses created in a mixed-use redevelopment situation in the middle of the Glen Burnie Town Center, but if there is, they only can get a school APFO exemption if they have limited bedrooms. That's what this is about.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Radvian, so moved.
Is there a second?
Cut.
Pickard, second. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration understood the bill, and I believe we intended to interpret it the way this amendment clarifies the provision. Never hurts to tighten it up.
Does anyone else have a comment or question on Amendment Number 1? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Fiedler.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Actually, I didn't hit my button in time. Yes. Okay. So, a townhouse would have to be, in order to incorporate mixed use, would the townhouse in that scenario have to have commercial underneath, or does it just have to be in close proximity of the townhouse? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
So, there doesn't have to be any townhouse at all.
Understood.
If you're building a townhouse, and I think mixed-use developments don't have to be, mixed-use development doesn't necessarily mean that they're connected at all. If someone bought acreage and wanted to create a mixed-use development, you could have a commercial on the road front edge and behind it, could be an activity center of some kind and behind, you could have multiple buildings. If some of those buildings ended up being detached housing, I don't want them to be exempt from school APF. I want, it's supposed to target multifamily, and it's supposed to only exempt apartments that are two bedrooms, 50% one-bedroom or less. Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. Thank you.
I don't know if a mixed-use development would come into play with a townhouse scenario, but if it does, I don't want them to be, three-bedroom townhouses to be exempt from school APF.
Understood. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Thank you. Since Amendment Number 1 was adopted, Bill Number 9421, as adopted, will be heard on December 6. Thank you to the panel. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9521.
Bill Number 9521. An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, International Building Code Supplement, Exterior Wall Glass and Glazing Non-Residential Construction.
Ms. Radvian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We talked a fair amount about this bill at our work session, but I thought I would just review a couple quick points. Basically, what this does is it asks builders to create their structures in such a way that the likelihood of birds flying into and having collisions with the building is dramatically decreased. Multiple organizations that have looked at this, architects have determined that it can be done at no cost or even, or very low cost. At the design phase, it can very easily be done at no cost, and even after the design phase, if you were trying to maybe switch from one type of glass to another, the cost increase to the overall project would be very, very small, a fraction of 1%. This bill has a backing, I hope you've seen from the testimony of a number of organizations, the Maryland Bird Conservation Partnership, the Maryland Ornithological Society, the Anorundal Bird Club, Safe Skies Maryland, Annapolis Green, American Bird Conservancy, and the Audubon Mid-Atlantic. This bill is based on, there was a little history that connected to a LEEDS pilot program, but it actually is more recently based on standards that have just been adopted by the federal government, so we'd basically be following what the federal government is doing in terms of bird-safe building. It has a dramatic impact, and there are a couple local examples that I want to share that I've learned about recently because I've been asking, hey, to, you know, folks that are more knowledgeable about this than I am, although I've learned a lot at this point. Examples of places that have gone from, you know, sort of un-bird-safe design and retrofitted to be bird-safe. So, for example, actually, DNR, the DNR building that's sitting down by the state courthouse, just, you know, like, probably a mile from here, was having about 175 bird building collisions a year, and it's usually supposed that those are underestimates for a couple reasons. One, once the sort of scavenge animals that might feed off dead birds, once they figure out where dead birds are landing, they're, you know, those scavenger animals take them away, and they're not counted because they're not caught, they're not sort of observed in time to be included in the count. Other reason for underestimate is that invasive birds are not counted, so, for example, European starlings, which are plentiful in this area, may have a collision, but they're not included in the count. You know, that's, I guess that's the way it is. I know, I want to just respond to, I know at the work session, there was a little bit of confusion, that I went back and figured out why there was confusion about the applicability of this bill to county buildings and schools. During the process of drafting this bill, we worked with inspections and permits, and we got the recommendation to move this from, I can't remember where we started, but to the International Building Code. And when we moved it to that part, the applicability changed to include, because the International Building Code applies to all of those different types of buildings, that's, that's why there was confusion about that, and I didn't realize that change when we, you know, kind of moved it from one part of the code to the other. I thought about, well, my original thought was, we're just going to do, you know, buildings outside, you know, sort of private entities, but then, once I, you know, I spent some time thinking about it and having some conversations, I said, well, if we are saying that this can be done at no cost, it's the right thing to do, then why would we exclude county buildings and public school buildings? So, I decided, once we made that acknowledgement, thank you, Ms. Kenny, for setting me straight on that, why not include them? I am happy to answer many questions, or any questions. Oh, I will tell you, actually, back to that DNR example that had, originally had about 175 collisions per year, they've done pretty significant retrofitting to make that building collision-free or collision minimum, and even though they haven't done all the floors of the building, they have already seen a 75% decrease in bird building collisions. So, if you kind of multiply this over many, many buildings over the space of the county, you know, one, at some point in the future, maybe we will consider retrofitting, but this could have an enormous impact on the bird populations in our area, and I think I mentioned at the work session that over the past 50 years, we've seen almost 30% of birds in North America, the decline of almost 30% of all the birds in North America. We went from about 10 billion birds in North America in 1970, and we're down to about 7 billion. And if we keep at that pace, you can see, that's a very steep drop that should be very concerning. This is not a well-known issue, it's not a well-known problem, but it is a huge problem. And we have an opportunity to sort of be on the cutting edge. There's a few other places that have done this, in particular, the federal government very recently. We also happen to be an important place to take care of this because Maryland is one of, on one of the four major flyways in North America where bird migration path takes place, so we have a lot of migrating birds passing through this area. No cost, save the lives of thousands and thousands of birds every year, already vetted by lots of architects and folks looking at this from a budget point of view. I ask my colleagues to adopt.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me is Mr. McCarrick from IMP and Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law. First, I want to thank the sponsor. There were a lot of discussions in drafting the bill. I think taking the suggestions from IMP makes it clear that if the council decides to adopt this policy, we would be able to enforce it within our existing structures. So, from a practical perspective, this is a policy choice for this council. We share the concerns of the sponsor for our natural environment. I think this is definitely on the cutting edge of local policy, so we haven't maybe fully heard from all the building industry folks. I know there has been some folks who might say this will add a bunch of costs. I don't know if that is accurate or not, but from, from a very practical perspective, the administration appreciates the sponsor working with us to make sure that the bill is workable.
Are there any questions? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. From a practical standpoint, if there is, I see that there's a grandfathering provision in here, but if there's a, an existing building that needs to replace a panel that's not, doesn't have a threat factor of 30 or less, and they go to replace it, are they going to be prohibited from, I mean, three years from now, let's say, are they going to be prohibited from replacing an in-kind panel, or would they then have to upgrade the entire building to this threat factor of 30 or less?
Ms. Radvian.
As written, I believe the answer is no, because we're talking about, we're talking about new construction, and I could turn over to one of the folks in the Office of Law to confirm that that's correct, that we're looking at new construction.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I would agree with that. I don't think that would apply in just a replacement scenario unless it was a full, you know, rehab or reconstruction situation.
Even though it says all glass installed on the exterior walls of non-residential construction?
I'm not even sure if you would come, Mr. McCarrick could probably answer, whether you come in for a permit for just one replacement of a window in any event.
Correct. This, Andrew McCarrick, Department of Inspection and Permits. So, we also follow the International Existing Building Code, which has certain, different levels of threshold for the amount of work you're doing. As we're adding this into the building code, and it's not, doesn't really have a section in the International Existing Building Code, we kind of just apply common sense. So, if you're just replacing one window, you know, you're fine. If you're replacing probably every window on a side of a building, we require them to upgrade the threat factor ratings. If that answers your question.
It does. Thank you very much.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the sponsor. We had a good conversation the other day about this, but I wanted to ask the county, do you have any studies locally? I know I've seen a lot of national research, a lot of it's like urban areas, but also, I know, pointing out the DNR building, you know, they have that, but is there anything that's been done here locally by our Planning and Zoning Office? That's the first question. And then, the second question is, if it's not in the building code, it's a pilot, why is that? Is it still not proven yet? And I'm not trying to question, I'm just curious, because I know the building code, we've updated it over time, and if you could answer that question.
Pete Barron with the administration. I'll let Mr. McCarrick answer the question on, on the International Building Code's amendment process and updating process, but we are not aware of any Anorundal-specific studies. Perhaps the sponsor might have some knowledge of any Anorundal-specific. The DNR building, though, is in Anorundal County.
Andrew McCarrick, Department of Inspection and Permits. The reason why it's not in the International Building Code, I do not know for sure. You know, there is a time delay, one thing can introduce, much like in this forum, but on a national and international scale, I do not know if they're planning on introducing it to the building code or not, if that answers your question.
Madam Chair, can I follow?
Yeah. And the reason why I ask is because I passed the bill with sheds a while back, and the reason why it changed is because people got bigger sheds, right? This has nothing to do with that bill, but the point I was asking is related to, is it just glass, right? Could it be metal? Could it be, I don't know. You know, so that's why I was asking, is that maybe that's the concern, are there other materials or other structures? I, I'm not an International Building Code expert, but, you know, if we're just saying glass or whatever else, I was just curious, I don't know if you had any info on that.
I believe a glass shed is a greenhouse.
Or a sauna. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So, as far as the rating is concerned, I would imagine if it's a new build, then it's How would one determine that a new structure meets the requirements? Would that be our county upon inspection, checking every window label, and it's, how does that work?
Yep. Andrew McCarrick, Department of Inspection and Permits. The best way I can equate it to is, the code requires you to have safety tempered glass in certain areas, you know, glass doors, you know, certain distance from the floor, so we check that during the building permit process to make sure the architects are calling out tempered glass, and we verify that during our inspection process, so it'd be much of the same process there.
We have Escovel, Madam Chair. And if someone or if a building were to, well, first, I guess, can you do post-building etching and decals, or would that not be allowed under this bill?
Andrew McCarrick, I believe it would. I believe that's one of the threat factors is just stickers almost, which would be fine.
I think I have one more follow-up.
I don't know how to duke it out with Ms. Hare. Why don't?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is there anything in our zoning code or anywhere in our code, really? I think zoning code would probably be the most logical place, but I know some of the decals that go on after the fact are, they can be wild patterns. So, is there anything that would regulate that, or how would that work? I'm just trying to picture some of these patterns going up on, all around a glass building.
Pete Barron with the administration. Perhaps Office of Law might be able to help, but I would say this is non-residential, so I don't think like a homeowners association rules would apply, but maybe Ms. Kenny is better than I on fancy decals.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. There's nothing in the zoning code that I can think of offhand that would specifically prohibit that unless the decals were to follow the definition of a sign, and I don't think we want to get into the whole sign discussion again. But I think, you know, most of those decals are going to, I'm assuming, be other birds or things like that, and I don't think they would necessarily
And I don't think they would necessarily fall within the definition of a sign or be subject to any regulation under that.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So the other piece I'm trying to figure out about this is I went to the website because the bill refers you to a nonprofit, I believe, that does these threat factors. And they do have a variety of materials that have a threat factor, but there's also, as far as I can tell, no sort of surface area restriction. And so I can think of lots of buildings that might use some of these materials, but they're designed in such a way that they're probably just fine, and birds can also see pieces of masonry or concrete or whatever else might be there. And so I'm a little concerned about the sort of what we're referring back to, this nonprofit's website and their definition of a threat factor, and how we interpret that moving forward. And the best I can find on their threat factor is they send 80 birds down a tunnel and record whether they fly towards one panel or towards another panel. And that's all they're using as a basis for this threat factor. And so I guess my question is, how are you going to evaluate a building that has some glass, but, and is clear glass, but they've also got some cool geometric features that really otherwise, you know, make it unique in such a way that probably birds are not? I just feel like we're missing, like this doesn't get the whole picture.
Is that a question for the administration or the sponsor, maybe?
Maybe for the sponsor, maybe for the administration, maybe for inspections and permits. I'm just not, this is where I'm struggling with this, trying to figure out. It feels like we're missing pieces, I guess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would, I would just say the options that are in that, obviously you've looked at them, and I greatly appreciate that you've taken the time to do that. I will say that this was, this sort of list, which is pretty extensive, was created after the LEEDs pilot. And I know there's folks in the audience that can correct me, and I hope they will if, when the time is right. But this, this list was created when the LEEDs pilot became, it became obvious that it was very complicated to interpret. And so the idea of making just a concrete list of here are all the different things, all the different options. At the same time, I know there are certain characteristics or certain ways of marking glass that will deter a bird. And so I have to say, I have not gone through every single item on here to see if there's something that describes that. But I will say, this was vetted by our, our partners at the federal government at the GSA. So, you know, I think they were, and they literally spent over a year, you know, trying to figure out how this should work. And so they refer to the, and they actually worked with the American Bird Conservancy, which is the ABCbirds.org website that is referred to.
Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reference to the, I'm just, this is for the sponsor, the reference to the DNR building that's been, had so many bird collisions and the work that they're doing, none of that has been regulated or mandated. That was by choice, correct?
Correct.
That was voluntary.
Thank you.
And there's, just on that same note, there's a couple, you know, high-profile projects that have, you know, taken it amongst themselves, or take it on themselves because they realized that they were sort of, you know, you know, DNR, you obviously, they're, they're supposed to be about natural resources, and their building is, you know, killing birds. They had, they had an incentive to, you know, sort of clean up their act, so to speak. But the Baltimore Aquarium is another one where, let's see, I have in my notes here that they were having about 80 bird collisions a year. And after, you know, some mitigation techniques that actually are not complete, at this stage, they're already having a 70% reduction in bird collisions. And then once they finish it, they'll be closer to 90%, I believe. Baltimore Convention Center, I actually don't know if they've taken mitigation, but here's an example of one that, you know, if we had something like this in the county, the number of bird collisions with the Baltimore Convention Center is about 1,200 every year. So the number is pretty staggering, and the impact that we could have by passing this bill is, is very significant.
Anyone else? All right. We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 9521. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received 10 submissions of testimony through the online testimony tool. Everybody, everyone went to the council. They were added to the record, and they are included in the summary posted online.
Thank you. Time for our in-person testimony. I do have three people signed up, so I'll call those first. And anybody else who would like to testify on this bill, please do make your way down, down front. Jack Turner, Ginger Woolridge, and Mark Sutherland. Mr. Turner, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have your two minutes. And make sure the microphone is on with the red light before you start speaking.
Good to go. Good evening, Council. My name is Jack Turner. I live at 1091 Cedar Ridge Court in Annapolis. Speaking today in support of Bill 9521 related to the building codes in an effort to reduce bird building collisions. I am an avid birder and wildlife photographer here in the county, and as such, I feel very strongly about my support for this bill. I'm also a member of the Anarundel County Bird Club and co-chair the advocacy committee as a director of the Severn River Association, but tonight I'm speaking as a private citizen. The evidence is clear that hundreds of millions of birds across the U.S. die each year by colliding with buildings. Bird populations across the board are declining for a number of reasons. That is a big problem. Birds are important species in our environment, and they have cultural and ecological value to us. Species of conservation concern, so birds that are considered special, including many warbler species, are actually more vulnerable to building collisions than other species of birds. Our own state bird, the Baltimore Oriole, is also at risk of building collisions during their migrations. As was said by Councilmember Rodvian, Anarundel County is situated in the middle of the Atlantic Flyway, which is basically this massive migratory corridor that birds use every year to travel north and south. So we're kind of smack in the middle. We've also got a lot of waterfront area and habitat for birds, so there are a lot of birds around. Migrating birds are susceptible to building collisions and can be disoriented by building lighting at night. A high number of building collisions occur during these migration events. So what do we do? Bill 9521 presents thoughtful and substantive legislation to address this problem. There's an entire framework and standard, like we've been talking about, the threat factors built around reducing these collisions. We have these tools in hand. The cost of doing nothing and continuing with the status quo comes with a higher cost than implementing this legislative solution. The proposed bill does not present an undue burden on building codes and will not significantly raise building costs. There's no question that this will reduce the number of bird deaths. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Ms. Woolridge?
Do I turn this on? Right in. Oh, there's. Hello, I'm Ginger Woolridge. I live at 207 Wardor Drive in Annapolis, and I'm here to support Ms. Rodvian's bill. My interest with birds is that I've, I've written a book on native trees and shrubs because of their support for native insects and native birds. I'm very aware of the threat around the world to all kinds of species extinction. It's what is something, it's called the sixth extinction. This is a worldwide issue. It certainly is something that we see here. When I was young, I used to see a flock of birds go from horizon to horizon. Some of us here may remember when we'd get gas in a car and people had to scrape insects off the shields, windshields. We don't have to really do that anymore, and that's an indication of the, the loss of species that we have, which is related to a loss of native plant material. Native plant material leads to a loss of native insects. Native insects are required for reproduction of birds. This is a very complicated issue, and it requires, it will require a lot of intergovernmental support and coordination to get rid of like our invasive species, including deer who are decimating our forests and who do not eat invasive species, invasive plants very much. That's why they're invasive. This bill is a really easy solution to helping the birds in a really easy way. It's, it's something that I think, this, this whole species extinction is one of the best ways, one of the best uses of government. It's not something that individuals can do on their own. And I just think that as a citizen, I, I hope that government will have standards of best practice for building codes. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woolridge. Thank you. Mr. Sutherland?
Sure, thank you. I'm Mark Sutherland with Safe Skies Maryland, Columbia, Maryland. I heard some very good questions among the council, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know a lot of the details if you'd like to ask that. So I'll just summarize the big picture here. We support this bill because it addresses the two most important threats to humanity, which are climate change and loss of biodiversity, specifically by addressing the glass on buildings, which is growing exponentially. If you have more than 25 to 40% glass, you cannot be energy efficient. So we're going in the wrong direction with that. And in addition, as the sponsor said, 1 billion birds are killed every year flying into window glass in the United States, which is unsustainable. So the good news is, as we've already heard, the solutions are simple and straightforward. The science has been done. The building experts at Green Building Council have worked with American Bird Conservancy and come up with design features and window treatments that are typical, the kinds of things you do for glare and for energy efficiency. So it's really not additional cost, it's just a design choice that you have to make. So the solution is there, and it seems to be something that, that we can't not do at this stage. To emphasize that it's, it's a growing understanding, I mean, people are saying, "cutting edge." It is cutting edge. I think of this as stormwater 30 years ago. Nobody really knew what stormwater was, and it turned out to be something that, you know, is decimating the bay and our streams, and everyone recognizes that they need to do their part. It's distributed across the landscape, and this problem is distributed across our buildings. But we have a solution that we can step on right now. As she mentioned, the feds have already taken this into, the language is basically the same as the feds. State of Illinois has now done this. New York City has now done this, and Howard County here in Maryland has already done this. And we're very close with the state bill in the Maryland General Assembly, which hopefully will pass this year for state buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutherland. Yes, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Lonnie Hummel. I live in Annapolis Roads, and I'm here in support of Bill 9521. I've been a bird lover for nearly 60 years. I'm very concerned about the loss of large numbers and diversity of birds in my lifetime. Given this drastic decline, it is very disturbing to learn that window collisions now kill an estimated 1 billion birds in North America each year. The good news is that most of these deaths are preventable with the use of glass that enables a bird to see and avoid it. Birds are important to humans for a variety of reasons. They pollinate, dispense, disperse seeds, and provide pest control. They help farmers save money by using fewer chemicals, enabling them to produce a greater crop yield that would otherwise be lost to pests. Birds offer other economic benefits as well. They are important to tourism. Many people vacation in Maryland to enjoy bird watching. This contributes more than 300 million to the state economy and provides many opportunities for employment. And importantly, for me and the estimated 50 million other birders across the country, birds bring us beauty and joy. They uplift us and make us hopeful. We certainly saw that during the pandemic shutdown. In summary, bird-friendly glass is a cost-effective solution that will prevent bird deaths from collisions. When the cost is so low, how can we say no? For these reasons, I urge you to support Bill 9521. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Johnson?
Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I want to thank Lisa Rodvian for sponsoring this bill. I thought your introduction was wonderful. You covered a wide territory, and I am really impressed with the other people who have testified. Again, they focused on, you know, the major and important points. So since they've all done the hard work, I'll pick up the easy end. When my little girl was six years old, we went to Sandy Point with the Junior Rangers program, and they said, the, some of the guests were from the bird club that met at 6:00 a.m. on Sunday morning. And my little girl says, "Can we go, Mommy? Can we go?" And you know that that means you got to get up significantly before 6 o'clock to be there on time. She loved it. They were wonderful to her, and birds meant a lot in her life. And then her, her big brother, who became a Marine and was, you know, he was a Boy Scout, and he learned a lot. But he wasn't so big on the birds. But he, as an adult, he's very much a birder, and it brings him joy. You know, he had a red-shouldered hawk that nested near his home. "Mom, I saw a red..." But we depend on the other species we share this planet with. We are dependent upon them for a sustainable environment. If we, you know, and it's this massive extinction that we're dealing with. And we really need to get a grip on what we're doing and taking the actions that we can take in order to save our planet. And birds are a really big part of that, along with the insects and the other, the other creatures that we all need, and the loss of the biodiversity. You know, we've had really good testimony from, from these folks, and I hope that you'll all continue to support, you know, protection of all of our species.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
You all are dismissed. And the public hearing on Bill Number 9521 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9521.
Bill Number 9521: An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement. International Building Code Supplement. Exterior Wall Glass and Glazing Non-Residential Construction.
Is there any further discussion? It appears not. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9521.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
I'm sorry. I thought we had an amendment to this bill.
None has been introduced.
Oh. Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Bill Number 9521 has been defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5821.
Resolution Number 5821. Resolution Supporting the Anarundel County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2023 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me from our schools is Mr. Shagnovic from Budget. Ms. McAllister from Kenny, from Kenny, from Law. Ms. Kenny, it's already after 10 o'clock. I apologize. Resolution 5821 supports the Board of Education's FY23 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program request. The council would ask, or the administration would ask that the council support this resolution. You'll see in your packet the letter the county executive sent at the request of our schools. Mr. Shagnovic, I'm sure can go into great detail if you have any questions, and we're happy to answer anything, and hope you will move this resolution tonight. Let's build some schools.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Okay. We will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 5821. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any submissions ahead of time.
And do we have anyone here who wishes to speak on Resolution Number 5821? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 5821 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5821.
Resolution Number 5821. Resolution Supporting the Anarundel County Board of Education's Fiscal Year 2023 Public School Construction Capital Improvement Program Request for Submission to the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction.
Any comments or questions from the council? Ms. Pickard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Shagnovic, thank you for waiting here into the late hour. I had... hour. I had one question and thought I would also give you an opportunity to say something about school construction. I just wanted, the Crofton Middle Classroom addition, how many classrooms are we adding there? Can you speak to that? How many seats?
Alex Shagnovic, Chief Operating Officer for the school district. The educational specifications go through the board tomorrow evening, but the proposal is for a classroom addition.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything exciting about the spreadsheet here? Well, then we'll say goodnight.
No, I love, I love building schools. No, this is a, this is a requirement that lines us up for state funding. Absent the letter of support from the executive in this resolution, we would not be eligible for state funding. And as the council knows, in, on average, we receive 35-ish million dollars from the state, so good ROI if you pass this resolution tonight.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 5821.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5821 is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5921.
Resolution Number 5921. Resolution appointing a member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sticking with me as usual tonight is Ms. Kenny. Resolution 5921 appoints Ms. Fitzgerald to the Ethics Commission for a term expiring April 30th, 2025. If this council will recall, back in September, the council unanimously adopted Resolution 4221, which nominated Ms. Fitzgerald. The county executive is bringing this resolution down to actually appoint Ms. Fitzgerald. Please move the resolution.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 5921.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5921 is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Mr. Volkey?
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second. Allison Pickard?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until December 6th, 2021. Please have a very safe and happy and wonderful Thanksgiving, and get yourself a new notch on your belt if you need to at the Black Friday sales. Okay, good night.